This came from September.
Oh, yeah.
Statuary provision.
The board of ed.
That's correct. The board of ed director. It never happens.
I agree. But it's not my fault.
Call to order. Salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I don't know how I get this in here. Freaking time. Sorry to give out wires. I feel like I'm on the, on the loser's track.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Here.
Councilor Angeloni?
Here.
Councilor Caprio?
Here.
Councilor Diamond?
Here.
Councilor Esposito?
Councilor Fawnin?
Councilor Fucy?
Here.
Councilor Rose?
Here.
Item two, approval of the minutes of the previous meetings.
Councilor Caprio?
Abstained.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Item A, we're gonna have the table again, the October 1st, 2013 WPCA Town Council meeting.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Regular Town Council meeting. Item three, reports of committees, boards, and commissions.
I'll move the table to the next meeting.
Mayor, I'd like to add, there's nothing here but Communication Committee did meet Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
between our meetings, so I would like to give a report on communications.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
The Town Council and the Board of Ed met a couple weeks ago.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
One of the items on the agenda was the security grant.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve the February 4th, 2014 WPCA Town Council?
There's a possibility that Governor Malloy will be appropriating another $10 million I make a motion to approve the minutes with one correction on page eight under item for school security, so we wanted to make sure that the Board of Ed was prepared to L, Police Department. It should read, Mayor Candelora remarked that the lieutenant, Danseco, retired, not submit that grant if that become, if that does come to fruition. that the police commission retired. We missed out on the last grant, so we wanted to make sure that that's an item that they're And also, just make a note, the, when they get posted on the internet, to make sure they're prepared to get ready. The superintendent of schools told us that they are working on that, and he has designated in the correct order, because they're out of order in our packet.
I'll second it as, somebody second it?
personnel to have that ready to go if it does come to fruition. One of the items he did talk about, because part of the provision of the security grant
No.
No. I'll second it with the corrections that Rose said.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth with the corrections.
is that there's money in the budget to supplement, because it's not paid for at 100% from the
Roll call.
state, that there's some matching funds, and he discussed the possibility of maybe
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
the 1% fund during budget season, that maybe the council could designate some of the 1% fund to go to school security. We also talked about the high school roof project, and unit ventilators, and the funding of those ventilators, the unit ventilators, and we touched a little bit about their budget and their upcoming, they will be finalizing their budget this week. And that was it.
Okay, thank you. Item four, Town Manager's Report.
Yes, just a couple things. I put down a memo, you should all have in front of you, just a couple of extra items in there. One is the memo from Carol Zeb about the Agricultural Commission suggesting a creation of an ad hoc committee, so there's a, there's a memo in there for your, you know, your thoughts on that. Nothing you need to, nothing that we're asking, or anyone's asking, to take action upon now. It's just a, you know, an idea, a concept that they'd like to bring forward at some point, so that's in there for you. And also, Chief Seward has given me a communique from the Fire Commission with respect to the fire apparatus and the older vehicles coming offline, so I'm gonna, you know, go through and just make sure that, you know, the process and policy respect is that I'm not missing anything, but, you know, proceeding with a review of that, see if that makes sense with what they want to do with that, and, you know, and making sure internally we have no other needs for those before we ship those out, so that you have those. There's nothing that you need to take action on. It's just FYI, bringing, you know, to your attention that some of the, some of the things we're working on, and you may see the, you know, formal requests from the Agricultural come to you, and get your input on them. Otherwise, you know, I met with unions talking about negotiations, met with Kelly Rommel on the PD side, we'll be talking in terms of ground rules for March, and then Kevin Murphy on AFSC, also met with him, just, he's the new face on that side, so we're gonna, again, be targeting March for some type of meeting, get the process going in terms of ground rules. And then some work on the steep grant, going back to the Phase 1, first original steep grant, processing the formal request for reimbursement on that, so I'm getting all the necessary paperwork for that into the state to get going on that. Also, you have in your packet later on in the agenda, or for your, you know, FYI, for your consideration, Donna Lucente is here, she had sent in some information in terms of the, her appointment, or suggested reappointment for the animal control shelter. Laura's here, as well as the director, in case you want to, you know, take the, in terms of asking questions, but I did get the tour way back early in the summer last year. Unc DeRoz was, was kind enough to give me a tour, and I, you know, I think a great asset, and I think we've got a great working relationship with the town, and really top-notch service over there. I think it's probably one of the best in the state, so I think we're fortunate in that sense, but, you know, at some point, you know, I know you've had appointments on, and I'm not sure where you are with that, but they are both here to, you know, answer any questions you may have.
Welcome.
That's it.
Just going back to the, the rescue truck. When, the town owns certain assets, I'll use the word assets, like when we emptied out a building, is it up to the town manager to, you know, decide what to do with those assets, or is it up to each governing body? You know, in other words, I don't know, you know, the police department, let's say, needs new weapons, and their old weapons they deem, you know, they need to replace, so, you know, or even cars, you know, how do, how do we go about doing that, or getting any value, you know, back to the town for those type of items, I guess?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question, that's what I said, I mean, for my purposes, you know, going back and reviewing.
I mean, I'm not saying this is a bad idea, and, or anything, but, I mean, you know, I know that truck has value to it, and going to the regional may be a great thing, you know, but, just curious, you know.
I've got to review, I've got to review internally to find out what the history is and what the, what the procedure, my understanding is, that it goes through the town manager in terms of, of asset, as, as any asset, and looking at that, that it's, if there's, in terms of value, before they dispose of it, but I want to make sure, you know, again, you raised the issue of whether or not you got, you know, police, fire, any of those.
Yeah, public works, I mean, everyone has things that are valuable.
My understanding is historically it's gone through, you know, a process where, like he says in, in part A, or the first part, with respect to the Rescue 11, Public Works Director Randorf, if the, you know, police cruisers come offline, they go to, they come here, and we're, you know, reason, but if there's no, no value to it, or if it goes to, I guess it goes to auction, it goes to auction, if you can't, we can't find a repurposing or reuse, then it goes off, off to auction. And I think in the case of the first recommendation, looking for, you know, keeping that one on for, for the, for the squad, and then the other one to go to a hazard unit to, which I believe, I don't, I'm not familiar with the, you know, that organization, where that's going, so I gotta do some research, but it's in the, you know, just FYI, it's in the works, but, you know, I'll have an answer for you.
Right. I think, I mean, we're, we're part of the South Central Regional, so, you know, I don't think it's a bad, you know, move, but I was just curious about, and that the assets that we have.
Yeah, maybe Anthony would know, I mean, I presume it's something that our, our own team, or our own volunteers would be, they have access and work on this, with this team?
The police, is it the number of, the regional police squad?
It's the, it's the South Central Regional Accident Reconstruction Team.
Right, that's a, that's a police function.
No, I'm, yeah, we're talking about the rescue, you know, that's going to the regional, and that would be something that would benefit us, as well as the other, I think, how many five or six towns?
I know the other towns are reportedly, they have contributed items towards this, and not just the, our.
Our contribution, right. Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Well, I think, I think, at least clearing up in my mind what your question was, I think his question, or I think the question I have is, so, the town goes out and buys a fire truck, and the Fire Commission maintains it, and the firemen use it, so now the truck, you know, they bought a new truck, and apparently this truck has some life left in it. So I think the question is, who can make the decision to donate it, give it away, or sell it? So I don't know if it's a John Jesmond question, as to whether the Fire Commission has that authority, or whether the Town Manager's Office has to do it, or something like that. Is that what?
Is that the question? That's kinda, yeah, exactly what, what the question is. Because Al, you remember when we closed Stanley T. Williams? You and I were looking at the trailers that were loaded with different items, and we were wondering, you know, where or how those items would be disposed of, or distributed, or who made the decision to remove those items, or discard those items?
They only discarded, I think.
I don't even, I don't know.
I thought that was still in, in the.
See, I think my question would be, when you look at this stuff, it's like, okay, so it's an '88 rescue truck that's been housed inside and is in, looks great, is there a community upstate, or in northern New England, that would pay us $50,000 for it? Or would they pay us $25,000? Or is it $5,000, so we might as well donate it somewhere? I think that somehow we ought to get a value on something before we give it away, but that's just me thinking out loud since the question was raised.
Yeah, I, I follow, and I'd have to review that, because I honestly don't know what the, the history's been, or, you know, what the policy's been, but my sense is that it's gone through this process where internally, if there's value, a, a use for it, then it goes, like say, public comes offline, Public Works, or Town Hall, police cruisers come this way, and when it gets to no value, it's either, you know, donated for a purpose that serves, like in our case, you know, our term, donate something, or it goes to the auction. But I think, I think it's within the, I think the council, I could be wrong, the council has given the power to the town manager to determine.
Is there a value determined on this at all?
I, I haven't seen one. I don't know.
Okay, I mean, who, you know, it just makes sense to be, to know what you have before you give it away or do anything, I mean, there should be a value placed on this somehow.
Right.
It's still in use, and it still would be in use if we didn't buy another truck.
Yeah, right, no, there's.
So why don't we have a value on this truck, so we know what we're doing, instead of just giving it away because somebody said we're gonna give it away?
Anthony, don't they usually have auctions on surplus property?
Yeah, I just don't have that number, I don't have a value.
Yeah.
Isn't that a way to get rid of some surplus? We, we have an auction usually every year on surplus property.
It hasn't happened locally in a while, because it was, it's more aggravated than it's worked, so what Fran uses is a place in Hampden, an auto auction, uses that for the Crown Vics primarily, he brings the other ones up to somewhere in eastern Connecticut, a machinery type, so he has like a dump truck.
Yeah.
That is no longer many value.
But then the town gets money for it, right?
So who get, who made the decision, the Fire Commission made the decision to give this to the region?
It's a recommendation.
It's a recommendation.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think, you know, to me, I always lean to the council. I mean, every one of the bodies that we've mentioned are designees of the, of the council. They all flow from the authority of the council. In the case of the council authorizing the purchase of an asset, at the least, it has oversight responsibility to make sure that that, the purchase of the asset is, is necessary, that it's, it's reasonable, and then when somebody decides that it's outlived its use, I think it comes back to the council, if nothing more than to report, or to recommend before the fact, as opposed to after the fact. I don't think the council should be in a position to ask these questions. I think until the council decides that they want, they don't want to be bothered with knowing what happens to spent equipment or assets, that it's a matter of putting something on the agenda and saying, listen, the Fire Commission voted to recommend that we send this for, to, to, to burn up in some exercise or something, we had a house, we were gonna do that one. So, Al actually hit, in my view, the question on the head, and that is not what, not so much what this piece is, is worth, but who decides? And you may want to get an appraisal, you may not want to get an appraisal. There may be people on the council that have independent expertise on certain equipment, let's say farm equipment, or something like that. So, I, I have to say that I would always, it'd be a very, very, it would be a very rare occasion for me to say that, well, the Police Commission trumps the Town Council, or the Town Manager trumps the Town Council, or the Town Attorney trumps the Town Council. There are certain, there are certain policies that these boards and commissions may, may pass to implement certain things, but if you're specifically talking about a financial commodity, not the least of which is something that you authorized and paid for, then I think at the end, you ought to come back to the council, at least as a report or a heads-up, it can be very brief, and then the council can decide whether there's a more charitable organization, or use that they would like to put it to, than, let's say, the people who happen to have the vehicle. I don't think the council should be asked, have to ask those questions, I think that, and, and, you know, it may never have come up before in the past, you know, it may, everything runs very smoothly, but as soon as, as soon as the Town Council makes it their business to want to know about an asset, or what's happened to it, or why we need a new one, I think, I think the, it automatically goes to the council to set a policy, if you will, or a practice, that says, look, from now on, irrespective of what may have been the, the policy before, it may have been sheer acquiescence or something, we want to know, we want to know, and in nine cases out of 10, it's not gonna be a problem, but, that's how rumors start, and that's how, and that's how credibility starts to be questioned, because, well, what happened to that piece of equipment that we had six months ago? Where is it now? Well, you know, so, that would be my opinion, I'm not, I don't think you're gonna find it in the charter, but I think you're the, you are the fountainhead of all the authority in this town, and whatever you, whatever the council in the aggregate wants to do, that's what should be the policy.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Okay, Community Events and Presentations. Item six, Citizen Statements, Petitions, and Correspondence. We've received a letter from Lindsay, is it Suter?
Suter.
Regarding proposed development at 65 Miller Road, North Branford.
No.
I don't know that I have to read this whole letter to.
No, it just, it was tagged in there, it just says more of an FYI, it requested it, it's gone to Carol and the planning and zoning as well, so it's just, it's, it's in there as, you know, correspondence, so there's no action, I know Carol's been in touch with him, no action that you need to take, and Carol's been in touch with him to give him, you know, additional information in terms of the process and the, you know, potential to go to the, you know, a portion of it going to the land trust, as we discuss at the, at the last, the last.
Can we just make sure that it's an attachment in the minute, so that when they get posted online, that it's part of that, so that residents can see what we, you know, what it was?
Item seven, Resignations and Appointments. Item A, Appointment of Steve Torino to Park and Recreation Commission.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Steve Torino to the Park and Recreation Commission for a term to, that expires on December 31st, 2016.
I'll second it.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Fucy. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Item B, Reappointment of John Anoffrio to Permanent Project Building Committee.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint John Anoffrio to the Permanent Project Building Committee.
I'll second it.
Well, okay, is this a reappointment?
Reappointment, yeah.
But I didn't know that he was on it, because he hasn't, or is this an appointment? Is this to fill the slot of Tony Sidera, who resigned?
It is.
Yeah, I think it's.
So it's not an alternate, it's.
No, what had happened was, he was on this committee before, and never officially resigned, so I believe what happened, he, rather than going through a resignation letter, and us having to have him resign, we're just reappointing him, basically.
As an alternate, so the spot of Tony Sidera still needs to be filled?
Well, this doesn't say often. It says permanent project building.
Well, but it, but in the thing that we got from the town clerk.
He was supposed to get a letter.
It says alternate, that's why.
Right, he was supposed to get a letter and sign to resign, and then we were gonna, you know, reappoint him for Tony Sidera.
We can make the motion to, to appoint him to the vacancy left by Tony Sidera.
Okay, and then that term would expire on November 30th of 2016.
30th, 2016.
Correct.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, and seconded by, is it Councilor, Councilor Fuci?
Fuci, yeah.
So it's an appointment, not an appointment?
Right. Before I do a roll call, I'm gonna ask everyone, please check your cell phones and turn the volumes off. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Item B, Reappointment of John Anoffrio to Permanent Project Building Committee.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint John Anoffrio to the Permanent Project Building Committee.
I'll second it.
Well, okay, is this a reappointment?
Reappointment, yeah.
But I didn't know that he was on it, because he hasn't, or is this an appointment? Is this to fill the slot of Tony Sidera, who resigned?
It is.
Yeah, I think it's.
So it's not an alternate, it's.
No, what had happened was, he was on this committee before, and never officially resigned, so I believe what happened, he, rather than going through a resignation letter, and us having to have him resign, we're just reappointing him, basically.
As an alternate, so the spot of Tony Sidera still needs to be filled?
Well, this doesn't say often. It says permanent project building.
Well, but it, but in the thing that we got from the town clerk.
He was supposed to get a letter.
It says alternate, that's why.
Right, he was supposed to get a letter and sign to resign, and then we were gonna, you know, reappoint him for Tony Sidera.
We can make the motion to, to appoint him to the vacancy left by Tony Sidera.
Okay, and then that term would expire on November 30th of 2016.
30th, 2016.
Correct.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, and seconded by, is it Councilor, Councilor Fuci?
Fuci, yeah. So it's an appointment, not an appointment?
Right. Before I do a roll call, I'm gonna ask everyone, please check your cell phones and turn the volumes off. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
I just wanted to take a quick moment and invite you up from the animal shelter to introduce yourself to the council. In all the years I've been here, we've never gotten to meet, and I know you play an important part, we're like a third of the, part, portion of the animal shelter.
Right.
And I know you do a wonderful job.
Thank you.
So I wanted you to meet the Town Council, I know you're up for reappointment.
I'm actually the director, she's up for the appointment.
Yeah, and I wanted to have you come in and meet the council, and see if they had any questions, and.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. I've been there, this is my sixth year, and we are one of the most recognized municipal shelters in the state of Connecticut, because we, we definitely go above and beyond typical municipal duties by coming up with unique fundraisers, programs, and we go out and we mentor other shelters with our policies and procedures, so it's, it's been a great run.
Do you have rescue dogs and all that stuff?
Yes.
Oh, you do?
Yep. We have, we, at the shelter, we accommodate dogs, cats, pretty much anything that's domesticated, ferrets, birds, guinea pigs, you name it. If it's domesticated, we take it in.
Cool. And you come over to our town if we have an issue or whatever, and pick up a stray dog, or do all that stuff?
Yep, you are our town, too, so, you know, it's, it's, we always say, we have multiple towns that we take care of.
Yeah, we've heard nothing but great things.
Condy Kane Corsos over there?
Not right now, but we've had them, we've had them, they're great dogs.
Yes, they are.
How many people are on this board?
On the Animal Shelter Commission?
Yeah.
There's seven.
Seven?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So, North Branford has one representative?
Yep, and that's been Donna as long as I've been here.
Right, okay.
Guess you're pretty happy with Donna, right?
Well, yeah, Donna's great, she, I think she does a great job representing this town, and anytime there's any question, you know, she will find an answer for us, and I have to say, you know, for as long as, I, I think your town here was with the shelter a couple years before I came on board, but it's, it's been nothing but a pleasure to work with your town, and I say that all the time, the police department is absolutely amazing, we deal with Public Works and the Recreation Department, they're just, they're wonderful, you know, dealing with multiple towns, we, we understand the difference.
Right.
You don't have to have a card on you, do you?
I, you know, I, I don't have a card, but I did bring you all calendars from the shelter, which has my number on it, so, and all our information's on it, so I'll give you those before I leave, yep.
I know Jamie Cosgrove in Branford has called several times about this appointment, so I don't know if we want to make this appointment this evening.
I don't see why not.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Donna Crescense, is it, what is, what is her, how do you spell it?
Lucente.
Crescense.
If you want, she can come up, too, and answer questions.
Crescense to the Animal Shelter Committee in Branford, which also covers our town.
I'll second that motion.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
What I would like to ask you, if from periodically, if you would come to the council meeting and give us a report on this, and the center, maybe we can get together with you.
Once a month, or would you like to come once a month?
Once every couple of months, I don't think.
Every couple of months, yeah.
Probably quarterly.
Quarterly, it doesn't matter.
Should I wait for Gina to contact me, or should I just reach out?
We'll do that, we'll set, yeah.
Yeah, we'll be.
If the town wants a quarterly, we'll put it on a quarterly.
Oh, okay, we'll put it on the calendar.
Yeah, yeah, I think it'll.
Why don't we put it on the next agenda?
Absolutely.
In March, and then come quarterly, okay?
Yeah, yeah, I think it'll be nice.
So that'll be the quarterly, month, mark.
Yeah, and thank you for doing such a wonderful job.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it.
I love it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quarterly, month, mark.
Yeah. And thank you for doing such a wonderful job. I really appreciate it.
I love it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item eight, unfinished business discussion in action. Item A, updates to define benefit plan documents, police union table, July ninth, two thousand and twelve. So nothing. Item B, Nutmeg Network Regional Performance Incentive Program Resolution.
Good evening. The, the state of Connecticut used some stimulus funds a couple of years back and constructed a fiber-based network. We talked about it previously at previous council meetings. And this is a grant opportunity of twenty-five thousand dollars roughly to do the upfront cost. We had a firm come in that the state has partnered with, Digital Back Office. And the total first year cost, the one-time cost, twenty-five thousand, four oh nine, is the amount we submitted to the grant. The last piece of the puzzle was a resolution on the backside of the first page that had to be adopted by your body and sent up to them.
I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved that the North Branford Town Council authorizes Michael T. Paulus, Town Manager, to apply for a regional performance incentive program grant for the purpose of obtaining the necessary upfront cost to connect the town hall at nine oh nine Foxen Road to the Nutmeg Network connection at North Branford High School Intermediate School Complex.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Caprio.
I just have.
Is there any discussion?
I have a question. Once we do this, and if we get the grant and everything gets done, will we then have wireless in the town halls?
Unrelated topic.
I know, but I just was wondering.
Fifty bucks for a router in spring, will you?
I mean, with all this work being done.
We, we have, we have a wireless now in the EOC, but we're looking, that's a secure network, because obviously the nature of it. We are looking to put a unsecured network, people that come and title searchers and like, like have a network. So we are working on a separate wireless. There is one wireless in town hall now, but it's a secure wireless.
Right.
But we are looking to put a, an unsecure wireless.
Okay.
And this is the one where we were gonna be kinda strategic on where the locations were gonna be for the drops for the Nutmeg, right?
Well, the, when the, the network got put in place by the state, each police, each nine-one-one center got a drop. One fire department in, in your town got a drop, and schools got a drop. So the schools have already had this, the CEN piece of it. The police department uses what's called the Public Safety, Public Safety Data Network. They talk to the state databases as far as criminal activity.
So they don't, they don't get involved with this?
No, no. This would be getting us onto the access piece for enhanced access.
Thanks. Item C, capital. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fucci?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Item C, capital improvement plan, two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen.
This just finally puts the saga of this year's CIP to, to bed. You'll note on the attachment, the revised plan, as was before you, you folks last month with the state aid towards the second column from end from the end, the grants for municipal projects, that was the new money this year. And what we had proposed to spend it on was a hundred thousand dollars towards a facility study, which will also capture the board of education buildings. Twenty thousand dollars for the fire training facility, whether it's Swiatek Park or not remains to be seen. And then at the bottom, twenty-seven thousand and nineteen thousand towards electric heat valves for both the high school and Totucket Valley. You guys ate twenty-four today last month. There was a letter from Carol that got approved. And this is now the final piece of this year's CIP.
Does this mean the facility study is gonna take place soon?
This means now the funding is in place, and now it becomes a internal process. The purchasing department will create an RFP and put it on the street to solicit a firm to do this in the study, yes. This, this actually, you know, gives it the appropriation to do it.
If I could add, on that, on the facilities piece, Communications Committee, I think the superintendent raised that issue of how far back ten years ago. We were able to find that plan. And so, you know, we, we can certainly use that in terms of one of those firms or that firm would probably have a leg up on the others, basically. Because I think it just sat on the shelf and other than, you know, some of the things, you know, it's a starting point that he suggested. So we do have that, that will be our starting point.
Well, he also suggested that because the middle school is new in Jerome Harrison and Stanley T. is closed as a school, that based on that facility study, that we might not necessarily have to look at those buildings as far as replacing them because they've been replaced. And so I think the request for proposal, when we put this out to bid, I think we have to be a little bit specific so that we don't spend a lot of time on those buildings. And that, and we don't waste money doing it because we know that we're not gonna replace the middle school. And we know we're not gonna replace Jerome Harrison School. So I think that has to be kinda spelled, spelled out and using the document, the facility study that was done, you know, ten years ago as a reference point also, so that we don't duplicate efforts that have already been done.
And also, what troubled me was we had approved these capital projects. And this money was in the budget. And for some reason, the, they, the Board of Ed wasn't aware of it or it didn't move forward. There was no trigger mechanism or a miscommunication, if you will. When I attended their last meeting, I don't think they were aware of the sixty thousand dollars, for instance, in the auditorium bricks to have someone come in to look at that problem and, you know, drill holes or, you know, whatever it is to find those issues. And, you know, it just troubled me when some of the comments were made about, you know, people going to the auditorium or actually encouraging people to go to the auditorium and trip and fall or sue the town. You know, I, I thought that was kinda inappropriate. But besides that, how do you get around these things, sitting here and not knowing? You know, what triggers?
Yeah, but before you, before you, before you ask the question, and anybody in the room, correct me if I'm wrong. The Board of Ed had to put in for the capital improvement, and if they watched the budget process, they would've seen that the sixty thousand was approved. Am I wrong?
That's, that's correct.
They, they get an adopted book when the books are, the adopted book is printed.
So I think the answer is, they didn't look in the book. And then they're going on, you know, the chairman of the board is going on TV saying, people, go trip and sue the town and Gomer Pyle could win in court, you know, I mean. Who is this? Is this nuts? I mean, that's what I've been told. I have not seen that. I've been told by people that that's what's on the camera.
Yes, that is true, 'cause I was at the meeting and that was.
So we've got a board chair that, and a, and a Board of Ed that asked for the money to fix the problem. It went through the budget process. It was approved by the voters in town, by the council. And then instead of opening the book and looking at it, they go on in their meetings and say that, 'cause they were basically blaming the town council for not funding it. I mean, you know, they got, they got some big issues over there and I think that that would warrant somebody stepping down because that's ridiculous.
I agree.
But John, those remarks concerned me, you know, to encourage.
If that's on TV, that's.
Can you get a hold and watch the film and see if there's any action that the council can take or something like that?
Well, I can't get a hold of film unless somebody gives it to me, whatever it is.
Well, Michael, get him the film.
It's on television.
Yeah, that was easy.
Or did they pull it?
Well, I mean, how can we have somebody when, when they're totally in the wrong?
Okay, I mean, I think you're making, I think you're going, I, I think you're going quite far down the line right now to remedy the situation. This is what's happening. Someone, someone didn't do their due diligence, made some statements that were over the top, insulting.
Also untrue.
Well, untrue, and, and, they were untrue. They were untrue.
At the very least, do we send a letter and tell him he needs to correct it on film?
Uh, I can, I can send a letter, absolutely. We're all public figures, you know, all people in public life.
And we're all open to every shot in the book, John.
You are. And, and.
And you gotta stand there and take it.
And public figures shoot other public figures from time to time. Usually it's, it's, it's members of the public who are, you know, disgruntled about some action that we took or didn't take or whatever you didn't take. But I certainly, I certainly will take.
Okay. It's actually an embarrassment to our whole town to have, to have a chairman of a committee like that do something like that. It's terrible. I mean, you, you're in a position of real responsibility and basically you're acting like an eighth grader. I mean, I, I didn't see it, but if you're encouraging people to sue the town, I mean, something seems wrong with that. Especially when the town funded the money that you're barking about. Ridiculous. So whose responsibility is it to, if the education, and maybe this is Anthony. If they put the money in, are we supposed to tell them, go ahead and do it, or are they supposed to initiate it?
Well, they didn't put the money in because it's in our capital plan, so that.
We didn't put it in. It came from them.
The request.
They submitted a request.
So they put in the request and we, we approved, we moved it through to the budget.
So I guess my question is, who's supposed to initiate the project?
Each department typically follows, follows the process through and knows when the budget's adopted, what they get and don't get. I mean, I don't call everybody and say, okay, Fran, you got X, you didn't get this.
That's what department has. I've been here a long time. You pretty much wait for them to come to us and say, hey, we wanna do this project. The money was approved.
Sure.
Part of the discussion at the Communication Committee meeting was which projects in the capital, what determines who runs the project? Does the Board of Ed run it? Does it go to Permanent Project Building Committee? Does the town council run it? So that, that was part of the discussion at the Communication Committee meeting.
But hasn't this stuff been going on for years and years and years with the budget and projects? And isn't there a precedent?
Well, some, most are sent to the building committee, most, you know, projects.
I mean, it's not like these people are totally blinded, and hopefully they're not totally blinded, don't know what the heck to do. So I guess, Anthony, my question is, where we've got board chairs telling people to go sue the town, should we send it to the building committee, you know? To initiate the project? To initiate this, or?
You could, certainly could.
I mean, 'cause that thing should move forward. And not only that, I think, you know, there's a big issue over there. 'Cause we had all these years when the floor didn't buckle and water didn't squirt out. I mean, I'm wondering if there isn't a pipe leaking or something like that over there, 'cause it didn't work. And it, it wasn't like that right from the beginning.
Correct.
So something's going on, and typically, Don, you're a plumber, typically that would be a leaking pipe or a leaking drainage pipe. Something's going on under that building.
Al, there's hydraulic pressure underneath this building.
That's correct, but I was actually the building official in town. When the footings were open, there wasn't hydraulic pressure there.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so something has happened. But they built the middle school then and attached it, right? And then we had these problems.
I think we had the problems before they started.
Right. You know, so I mean, but you got sixty thousand to.
Right.
Figure it out. So maybe instead of worrying about what they said, we should move it forward. Do their job, John.
Well, that's where I'm at, where I wanna correct these problems. I mean, we also have electric heat valves for thirty-three classrooms where, you know, it was suggested that we get a price for the valves and look at getting a installation by John Florio, who works for the Board of Ed, and.
The Board of Ed was going to install those. The, the two schools that have the heat valves.
Right.
Totucket Valley and the high school, basically this cost might actually be lower than that because it's for parts only, because they were going to have their own personnel install them on, you know, during regular working hours. So there, there would not be a bill for additional labor costs. So it's just for parts. So on that item, the question became, is that something that the Board of Ed just handles themselves? Or does the council do it because it's on capital plan, or do we refer to permanent project?
I mean, my recommendation would be to get a price on the valves only. And if John Florio can do it for, you know, on school time, it would save that much money on labor.
Maybe we could do more, I mean.
Or do, you know, we could do more valves. But as long as we have to do it where you, you know, buy the valves separately on a separate invoice or whatever, and, you know.
I mean, seventeen thousand buys a lot of motorized valves.
Yeah, right.
You know?
Right. But see, I don't know if that seventeen thousand includes labor and only a few valves. So that's why I'm saying, if we just buy the valves, get the invoice, see what the valves actually cost, we may be able to buy more valves and do more of them. And if John Florio or, you know, that hurt his very good can put them in, then great.
Well, they basically said, because this heating season is over with, for the most part, the work would be done between now and next year's heating season. And they felt confident that they would be able to do, to use school personnel to do that.
Yeah. But I still think we need to get a price on the valve separately.
Yeah.
Account, yeah.
So what you're suggesting, to have the Board of Ed get a price and come back to us with their vote?
I think Michael can handle that, right?
Yeah, I mean, just.
Yeah, we had talked about it in Communications Committee, and I think we're gonna separate out, run it through the purchasing department.
And then let us know what's happening, if anything's happening, so we'll be aware of what's going on.
Yeah.
In terms of buying the valve, they, they, we buy the, the commodity or the valves and they put the labor into it. Does that make sense?
Great. Okay, so then on the auditorium floor, is it, we wanna move that to the building committees?
I think we should.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion. Do we need a, do we need an eight twenty-four referral or not? Because they already approved the whole.
Right, done the whole thing. You're good.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to move the auditorium contract, water filtration in the lobby, issue to the Permanent Project Building Committee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fucci?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Right, that's what I'm saying. All right, I'll, I'll make the, I'll move the motion that the North Branford Town Council adopts a two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen through two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen capital improvements plan pursuant to the favorable review of this year's current projects by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
I just have a question on that. Is it through eighteen nineteen? Because the thing from planning and zoning just mentions the thirteen fourteen.
It's given just the current year. The plan is through eighteen nineteen, but the out-years are.
Right, they're subject to change.
Yeah.
Right, and the eight twenty-four didn't reference the eighteen, the other five years, the other four years. I, I think the motion should be amended so that it only adopts the thirteen fourteen CIP plan. Because that's all that the planning and zoning did. That's all that was sent to them, was the thirteen fourteen. So Don, do you wanna amend your?
I'll amend it if you, if, if that's what we're gonna do.
And I'll amend my second.
Okay. I'll amend the, the motion to go through to two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen to reflect what the P and Z Commission adopted or approved.
Moved by Councilor Fucci, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Hold up, I got a question.
Discussion.
So I'm being dumb now? So I'm being dumb now. It says here that on, at February fourth, we moved it forward, the current year projects through two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
We didn't, we only did the thirteen fourteen. We only.
So we didn't send, we didn't send this through?
We didn't send up through eighteen nineteen to planning and zoning. We only sent the one page that's, that's all we talked about at the last meeting, was the thirteen fourteen.
And the motion is amended now?
Right.
So.
Okay.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item nine, new business discussion in action. Item A, I'd like to welcome our Chief, Chief Cannelli to report, uh, regarding hiring request, also Commissioner, uh, Leon Doffey. Good evening.
Good evening. We had a, um, an officer, our lieutenant retired after twenty-four years of dedicated service, and we're looking to, um, fill that position. It's not, it's not a new position, it's a current position, as we've been in front of the council many times for that. Currently, we have, um, a sergeant who has taken over as, um, a temporary fill-in for the lieutenant's position.
So are you looking, so you're gonna make that sergeant a lieutenant? Is that?
There, there'll be a testing process, um, that's gonna be advertised locally within the department. For, um, you have to be a sergeant in order to move up to be a lieutenant, and that'll be done in front of the Board of Police Commissioners.
Okay.
I'm looking to fill the lieutenant's vacancy as a patrol officer. We have to have a patrol officer come in and start from the bottom. It's just a man, it's, it's just not the title, it's just a person.
Because of the moving up, of the potential moving up within the department into that position, it would vacate a patrol person, is what you're saying?
Well, basically, it's because a, a body left, we're trying to fill a body.
It's a patrol that you're trying to fill?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Right, but Dan, Lieutenant Dantico wasn't on patrol, he was inside, so it, they're looking to move up within the department, which would leave a vacancy for a patrol.
Trickle down the fence.
Right.
And that's.
Actually, he's vacant right now.
Cause that's why he's filling, uh, states.
Now, but you looking at a transitional, or what are we looking at?
Well, we're gonna attempt to hire a lateral, but there's twenty-eight communities right now that are advertising for laterals. Pretty difficult right now, but, um, so we're gonna make an attempt for the next thirty-eight days to advertise.
You're talking about one another year to get this guy on the road, basically?
If we hire a new recruit, it'll be one year.
And Chief, if you move from within a sergeant up, does that create an issue with the difference in pay as far as, uh, with the sergeant versus a lieutenant, let's say, or?
Yes. Um, last Monday, the Board of Police Commissioners proposed that the fill-in lieutenant receives lieutenant pay, and I've been in touch with the town attorney several times, we want to carve out some issues that could come up. If you have a patrol officer temporarily fills in for a sergeant, let's say for an eight-hour shift, my concern to the town attorney was, we do not want that patrol officer to say, we want sergeants' pay. It's still union's position, so what we're gonna do is, um, the town attorney, he's gonna carve out all the small issues, and this habit presented that, uh, because this is gonna be a long time, uh, fill-in, we'll have the, the sergeant in the lieutenant's position getting lieutenant's pay until we finally, um, have a, a competitive exam, and one is made permanently.
And I think the, the reason for this memorandum, I did offer to draft, subject to the, for the council, is that it not create a precedent. This is an extraordinary situation, they're second in command, they don't have one. So, uh, we don't want the, the union to think that every time somebody occupies, uh, a one-notch higher position, that they automatically get, uh, additional compensation for that. But in this particular case, because it's such an important position, uh, the police commission and the chief believe that it's important to pay that individual, uh, for the work that he's doing, and to create a memorandum that says that this is not, is not setting a practice of precedent for any other occasion, for any other, uh, position moving up to a higher position. But, uh, I think I'm, I, what I gather is that they want to, you know, do a significant investigation for, for that appointment, and they don't want to rush it, and it seems to be inequitable to have somebody assume those duties, and possibly some of his previous duties, at the same time for compensation that's less than what the previous incumbent earned. And it's a temporary situation.
Now, the patrolman can't be a sergeant without passing the sergeant's test and all that, right? So he's not gonna be a sergeant.
Correct. In, in order to take the sergeant's test.
But he's gonna take, oh, he's gonna take the sergeant's test?
No, in order to take a sergeant's test, you have to have five years of service with the North Branford Police Department. That, if we had an outsider that came in, a lateral, that had ten years' experience, he cannot take the sergeant's test until they have five years' experience, according to the union contract.
How many sergeants do you have?
Six.
Do you need another sergeant, or you could just bring in a patrolman and keep six sergeants?
But one of those sergeants might become a lieutenant.
We need supervision on every shift.
So the guy you're gonna have come in and replace the sergeant, is he gonna be qualified as a sergeant?
I, I don't know that yet.
Well, that's what I mean, you're saying you're moving somebody up within the ranks in the sergeant, he's positioned to be a supervisor, but is he capable?
Oh, for, oh, I, I thought you meant if an outsider came in.
No, no, no.
No, from within the department? Of course, yes. Uh, it's, it's a very competitive exam, it's a difficult, difficult exam to pass. And we have, we have an outsider, an outside agency that oversees everything, yes. I thought you meant, um, will a person be qualified on a lateral in order to take that test?
No, I was looking for a lateral to come in and be the.
Oh, I, I, yeah, definitely, I would like a lateral to come in.
Obviously, right?
Right.
Yes. Okay.
But if you go on the post site, which is the Police Academy site, there's currently twenty, there's twenty-seven towns, including our towns, twenty-eight towns, that are hiring laterals, so, yeah, I, I, I'm sure the council read about, uh, the East Haven Police Department, where, um, people say they're a year or two, and they're moving on, and the chief is very upset, which I don't blame him. So everybody's trying to steal from, from one another.
Right.
So are you gonna advertise concurrently, both for a lateral and for a position, or do you, are you just doing?
Right now, it'll be just for a lateral.
Okay.
I'll give it thirty days and see what kind of results. Last time we had four, four applicants, and we did hire two, tremendous people. But, um, you know, we have to watch the balance of the police department too, because they're fifty-five, fifty-seven years old, so we have to watch out for laterals. You know, you, you don't want a, a real older police department, you have workers' comp problems, you have injuries. So it's kind of a delicate balance that we're looking at right now. I put the word out that I want the, um, a lateral, ten years or less of service. We got zero results, zeros.
Chief, uh, I just, one question, listening to all of this, now, when you're moving the sergeant to the lieutenant, and, and we're, we're gonna be looking for a lateral, or possibly a new, new recruit to replace a patrol officer, we could be without somebody for a year if we can't find a lateral, is that what we're?
Yes.
So is it, I mean, would it be better to wait on moving the sergeant to lieutenant, or is the lieutenant what we can't do without, rather than the patrolman? I guess is what I'm asking.
Well, I need a lieutenant. I, I, I definitely.
I'll tell you, that lieutenant took me on a tour of the facility since I was new on the commission, and he's doing double duty right now, he's really got his hands full.
That's good. I don't know how it works, I'm just asking the question.
The other faculty you gotta really think about, we've got other guys that are gonna be.
Well, that's what I'm, that, that's why I'm asking the question, 'cause I know we have other guys.
It, it takes time to develop these people, or, we've got, we've got at least two sergeants that I know, he probably knows more, that are getting ready to leave soon.
Yeah, as, as I'm in front of the council to replace one, I like permission to replace two, because I have one that's, has his years of service in, and he's actively searching for another job to start another career. Yeah, that, that's what happens, because we did hire young, they put the twenty-five years in, and, and, you know, and they're, they're moving on.
Goes by quick.
After, after twenty-five years of, of patrolling the streets, you know, even though it isn't our branford, this, this, it's still, it still takes a little bit out of you, you know, weekends, midnights, holidays. So, he's, he's actively searching, uh, he, he really is. Instead of me coming back again in front of the council, if you'd be so kind to give me permission to hire two, not new bodies, you know, not, not over the compliment, but to, to replacements, I would appreciate that.
Did he put his papers in to retire yet?
No, no, but every day.
But what happens is, once they find a job.
I don't want him to leave, you know, we, we have, we have this conversation, we laugh about it, I said, just stay.
Well, it could be, I mean. Especially if you're not able to get laterals, you know?
The problem is if the job opens.
If you do a recruit, probably have well over a hundred applicants, but laterals, you're just not getting them. And the question is, why does it take a year? There's six months in the police academy, after they come out, they have to do, um, four hundred hours of F T O, which is a field training officer, that's mandated by the state, so that's another two and a half months, plus the application process, the interview, and psychological, polygraph, physical, it's a year.
How often does the training at the police academy start? Are, is there certain times, or is it just a running?
Um, they, they, they probably run four classes a, a year, they're doubling up.
So when's the next session that opens?
I don't know when, I, I haven't even looked into that, because I'm focusing on laterals, you know, right, right now.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, is, is there such a thing as a lateral for sergeants, or is it just, when you, when you use the word lateral, you're just talking about patrolmen?
Patrolmen.
There's no such thing as, uh.
You've gotta be in the department for five years.
Yeah.
So you have to be in the department for five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's where we stand right, right now.
We got a big problem.
Are you looking for a motion to be able to at least appoint one, right?
One for sure.
To hire one patrolman?
One for sure, so I don't have to come back.
One, the replacement, and then one if one retires, or then we'll be able to react, is what you're saying.
I'll make the motion for one replacement, and a latter one possible. Second one, if that need comes soon. I'll second it.
Moved by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, John.
Appreciate it. Thank you. I wonder why?
Um, item B, presentation by Maggie, is it Trickle?
Trickle, yeah. How you doing, everybody?
Of Connecticut Solar Challenge.
Connecticut Solar Challenge, yeah. I have packets for everybody, just pass it down. I'm gonna go through it really quick for you guys, because I don't have a full agenda. Um, I'm with Connecticut Solar Challenge, and we are.
Can you just step a little closer, so they can pick it up on the machine?
We're a town initiative that promotes going solar, and, uh, the way we do this is we go through educational, um, outreach and cost reduction. So what I'm gonna do is, each page is numbered, and I'm gonna go through it really quick, and if you want to follow along, I'm already on page three. Um, for the residents, going solar is made simple and affordable by going through this program. The residents also will receive a significant discount on solar energy systems, and informative workshops offered to the residents to teach them how to take advantage of the benefits that the state rebates and the federal, um, rebates have, uh, right now. And on the next page is a, uh, it's a news article from the Chester Elementary School, kind of showing how they used the rebates and through our program, and had put solar on their school. And as I said, I'm gonna go through this really quick, 'cause it's usually like a half-hour presentation. On the next page, which is page five, is, uh, there's monitors in the school system right now that when you walk through the doorway, it kind of shows the kids exactly, um, what their solar array is equivalent to emissions saved, and trees planted, and light bulbs powered per day. It's kind of a neat way for the kids to kind of understand what's going on. Page six, um, why is Connecticut Solar Challenge good for the town, is our marketing material is free to the town. The town earns a free solar array from Connecticut Solar Challenge, and you earn points from SEFIYA. And, um, the points are include the solar electric, solar hot water, and solar pool heating. And, um, I'm gonna go ahead and skip page seven unless there's a lot of questions about that. On page eight, it shows a chart exactly how the town earns the free solar array for every, um, KW that is sold through this program. You, after the, you earn fifty K Ws, you'll earn a one KW system for one of your municipal buildings.
That's kilowatt, right?
That's kilowatts, yep. And after a hundred kilowatts, you'll earn a two KW system, and so on and so on. And that's free for the town. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and skip page nine because it just kind of explains about KW systems, you can read that on your own. The assurances that we give to the town is that we have a ready-to-go marketing plan that has been proven to be effective. We developed it specifically for Connecticut communities. So I'm a grassroots program, and we only deal with Connecticut, uh, installers, so that we're kind of keeping the business right here in Connecticut for Connecticut communities. And we designed this program with that in mind. Um, there's a step-by-step process with all the tools and the administrative support required to make it successful. So you're probably wondering how we are offering this to you, is, um, I actually go ahead to the solar contractor and work a deal with him to make sure that he brings his price down, knowing that a town initiative will bring in a group purchasing power. And, uh, where there's numbers, there is power in numbers, right? So they will reduce their price, then we come in with, uh, the educational part, tell the residents how they could take advantage of the state rebates, and, um, and we go ahead and make it affordable for everybody. We bring in a, um, a system that will kind of make it so it's not so elaborate. With solar, it's a huge price, and right now Connecticut has a lot to offer as far as loans go, and, uh, there's leasing systems, so you could basically get a system put onto your house for absolutely no money down. And this is all using Connecticut funds that are available to the Connecticut homeowners. Um, on page twelve, it's a typical pricing, program pricing. We go ahead and we give you the best price that we could possibly give. So typically, what's been done in the past is you would have a tier system, and you would start at a higher price and work your way down. And everybody would get a rebate, whoever, as, as long as there's more people who sign up, the lower the price goes. But in our program, I have a little bit more flexibility to go ahead and offer you a tier four price, which is three dollars and sixty cents, and going one more tier down if you head over two hundred and fifty kilowatts, to make it a three dollars and forty-seven cents per watt, and everybody would be refunded from the first tier. On page thirteen is, um, the best time to go solar is right now. So anybody who is thinking about it in your town. So anybody who is thinking about it in your town or considering it or has an ideal situation, this is the time for them to go solar. With the bulk purchasing rates from the contractor that I'm giving you, along with the special manufacturing pricing, the thirty-five percent upfront rebate from the state of Connecticut, and the thirty percent federal tax credit that's available, and all the systems are sales tax and property tax exempt. The return on investment is within seven to nine years. And the systems, depending on which system you get, can last from twenty-five to forty years. On the next page, on page fourteen, is an email that I received from Safia. And this is basically saying that we're in our final step of rebates. So they're taking the rebates away from the Connecticut homeowners after step four. They're going to repurpose the money into other ways that people can get clean energy. So this may be the last opportunity that Connecticut residents have to do this program. On page fifteen is the town's responsibilities. All we ask is that we have a signed letter of commitment saying that the town endorses this program and sponsors it. You designate a liaison to act as the primary contact between myself and the town. And that's just to deliver all of the results that I'm, I'm producing with this. And somebody has to choose where the system is going to go, on which municipal building. We ask that the town provides a space for our workshops. When we have these workshops, we've had some great attendance. Madison had over three hundred people show up to find out about the rebates and the different ways that we had to offer solar. And Clinton had about a hundred and fifty. So there's a lot of interest when it comes to solar. We work really close with the HES program, which you guys have already begun. Without the Home Energy Solutions Audit, we cannot put solar in. We go hand in hand. And typically, our programs are nicely melded together, one after another. We kind of help each other out. On page sixteen, it's simple to start the program. You just choose a launch date. That will be the day that we begin the program. From, from that point on, it's a six-month process. In the six months, we send out a mailer to make sure everybody understands what, when they can get the information and where. We do hold three different workshops to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to receive the information. We get the word out through Twitter, Facebook, all of the social medias. We use all of the newspapers. We'll go on access television, whatever avenues are available to us to use to get the word across to everybody. We let the professionals do the installations. We've had some great feedback from all of our other towns that we have worked with. They really enjoy working with AEGIS and exceptional work. On the next page is seventeen, this is basically kind of giving you an overview of what I was just speaking about. It's all the marketing that we are able to do for our town in order to make this successful for all the residents and for the town. On page eighteen, this is kind of a small overview of the finance options available right now. That is, Safia has worked so hard on making this available for all of the residents. And as ratepayers, everybody should understand that there are so many options out there. And that's all we're doing is trying to get the word out to the residents. And then on the last page is, basically, it's our requirements of our solar contractor and how competitive we are with picking the right people for the job. I knew I was going to make this short, but I didn't think I was going to go through it that fast. Do you guys have any questions?
Have you done anything well, please, with this already?
Yes, we've actually already been in Chester. We've been in Bethany. We're working with Madison right now. We're also in Clinton and we just signed up with Westbrook. Guilford is still one of the people who are interested, but we're trying to work with them too. So it's moving in this direction. Our word has been out for a while. And because of all of the activity, it just seemed, it seemed good to keep the media going right down the shoreline.
Do you have any buildings that you've done already in the area?
Oh, yeah, yes. Well, actually, the contractor that I am working with, not only have they done all of the installations that were in Madison, Clinton, Chester, and in Bethany, which I could tell you that Madison is about at a hundred and eighty KWs at this point, almost to the two hundred, and their program really just began. And so is, Clinton is also, has about seventy-eight KWs, and that's through the winter. Because we just signed up with them in November. So all of that was installed by AEGIS, not to mention that they also had the Branford Fire Department was their job too. There's so many other, I mean, I can give you guys pictures and references. There's, there's undoubtedly a lot to show for the work that AEGIS has done.
Basically, what you want from us is a place to hold these workshops and bring people in to sign up. Is that what you basically want from us?
I really do just need the workshop, somebody to take the information from me. And I also usually work with a small committee because somebody does have to pick the municipal building that the solar is ultimately going to go on. So, yeah, I'm not looking for a contract, I'm just looking for a commitment. Usually the, the town lawyer would be able to review it easily.
What's the cost of a system, say, for whatever municipal building, we put it on this building, say? I mean, I don't know, how many square feet is this building? Do you know offhand?
Ah, I don't know.
Ten thousand, maybe, twelve thousand, probably something like that. And then we're getting the rebate?
Yeah, there, there is, the municipal building is a little bit different than.
But you have to get one town building to put this on to start this program?
Nope, no.
Oh, no, this is residential, right?
This is residential and commercial. We actually, at the end of the program, provide the town with a free solar array. So it's completely free to the town.
Okay.
You just have to pick the building that you would like.
Right, okay.
And you can add it on to the, if you end up going with the high school, getting solar, you can add it on to that. If you put solar on to the high school through our program, those KWs would be counted as double points. So you would get points through Safia and you would get points through our program, which would just put you in a higher advantage at that point.
The problem with that is, is it structurally capable of handling those panels?
Yeah, they're, a structural engineer always has to check that kind of work.
Pretty much at the end of its life.
Was it the high school or, I thought?
The middle school's basically brand new. And that's actually our emergency shelter too.
But the high school is the one that they're doing the new roof on.
New roof, okay, all right.
Now, I have one other question, then I'll leave you alone. These panels, they have, say, a twenty-five to forty-year life.
Yes.
Now, does their efficiency drop every year as they get older, as far as producing electricity?
They, they do have a depreciation in value and I would assume that the reason is.
So it doesn't produce, the seventh year out, it's not going to produce as much energy as it did the second year?
I don't think it works like that. I think it's more of a overtime. After twenty years.
Twenty years, twenty years is the threshold.
Yeah, twenty years.
Twenty years after that, basically.
Then it can start losing some of its capabilities.
So now what, say, this whole system is spent after twenty years? You either have to replace it or scrap it?
Right.
Well, that's why they maintain them until ten years.
Well, there is a twenty-year warranty on the panels that are being sold through this program. There's also other panels that are also available that are forty years guaranteed.
Just for curiosity, what do they do? Where do they bring these panels when they're done with them? Say, after the life is over and you need to pull them off the buildings, where do, where do they put them? Where do we put them?
Actually, the solar companies will come back and take them down. It's not a very big cost to the homeowner either.
Right, and if you wanted to scrap the program, would just pull them off and seal up way after sealing and move on?
Yeah, so if, if you end up going with a lease kind of program, that's the only time that I've ever seen a homeowner actually take the solar panels off their house. And what the lease program does is they come in and for absolutely no money down to the homeowner, they will get solar panels on to their house. And the only time that I've ever seen your scenario happen is when a homeowner goes to sell their house and the new owner no longer wants the lease, doesn't want to be part of the solar. So the homeowner who is trying to sell the house, they actually have to buy out the lease at that point and then be responsible for taking the solar panels off if they want to go ahead with that sale.
And all that's explained in these workshops?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
So basically, it's not costing us anything and you can just come in and do your thing and we see what happens?
Yes, yes.
Sounds reasonable to me.
That's exactly what, we're hoping that it sounds reasonable.
Well, I try and keep things simple, you know.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Is there any other questions? I'm sorry I went through it so fast. I just really didn't want to overload you guys. It's been a long night.
We appreciate your briefness.
We like things fast.
So would the council want to see the, I mean, what you need, Maggie, is the endorsement, the commitment? Do you want to, to write that up, present that for the next meeting on the fourth, if your, the council's ready for that?
You mean the document that has to be reviewed by the town attorney?
Right, right.
Can't hurt, as far as I'm concerned.
Move forward with that to the next step to see that?
Yeah.
I mean, we have, just, I mean, we also have a, I have a working group, an internal energy group. We meet with you, UI, and this is where really the genesis of Maggie came to that group and talked about how it is a, an add-on beyond what they do in terms of the home energy solutions. And it's just, I think it's a great fit. And it just gives the residents an opportunity to hear about a program they may not, may not be aware of.
And what are we obligated to, if anything?
Yeah, again, it's, it's, it's making the commitment in, in terms of the endorsement that we're basically giving our, you're, the council would be giving their seal of approval to say that this is, you know, worthy company to work with and program. And that we coordinate pretty much with the school or have some type of facility that their organization can work and pull together these workshops. And, you know, I'm pretty much it for the, you know, communication in terms of the energy work group so that we can, you know, we can easily coordinate to make that happen. Because we're doing a bunch of other things as well, in addition with UI, doing our, our footprint of energy footprint. And we have a student intern that's coming in and looking at all of our bills and, and, you know, running the data to take a look at where we can save as a town. So we're getting that profile done for us. And this is for residents, is, you know, a seamless sort of add-on in terms of service and program, so.
Okay.
If it makes sense, we'll proceed and we'll, we'll get the language and get to John and hopefully for the next, next meeting.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Presentation of town audit by Michael. I'm sorry, Michelle Lozo, Seward Amande. I'm sorry.
Thank you, girl. No problem. My name is Michelle Lozo. I'm a partner at Seward Amande. Just to let you know, this was our first year doing the town of North Branford's audit. And I want to definitely express my appreciation to Anthony and his staff and all Town Hall employees and Board of Ed employees for letting us come in, asking lots of questions. Obviously, a first-year audit is very time-intensive. So they were all very cooperative and very professional in that aspect. So just to let you know, you have a good staff. We also performed, in addition to our financial audit, both a federal and state single audit that basically entails compliance procedures that are directed by the federal government and the state of Connecticut for various major programs that the town, some of their grant programs. There were no compliance issues related to any of those state programs and federal programs that were audited. Basically, your general fund, your unassigned fund balance at the end of the year was five million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand. That's about eleven percent of your thirteen, fourteen budget. Your target usually that you've set is ten percent. So you're right in line with that. Your total fund balance, just over seven million, is about fourteen point six percent of your thirteen, fourteen budget. Your target there is fifteen percent. So right in line with where you, where you want to go. A budget surplus for twelve thirteen was about five hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, mainly on the revenue side, some additional state grant money received along with higher property tax collections on some past due balances more than budgeted. Your pension funds, you're basically funded, you're required minimum contribution on all of your pension funds. Looking, obviously, most of the pension funds in the state, with the decline in the market, all took a hit in the last few years. That seems to be trending up a little bit as the market does increase. Just keeping an eye on that with your investment mix, making that required contribution. Obviously, bond rating agencies are looking at both the pension and your other post-retirement benefit obligations in their ratings of municipalities in Connecticut. There was a management letter issued. I think you have seen copies of that. We are addressing some of those issues with the Board of Ed, helping them to establish full trial balances for some of their funds that are, weren't totally put together. They have a new system up there for some of their cafeteria and grant programs. So working with them. Some of the other items in there actually were addressed during our audit, but we did want to bring those to your attention. And I do want to recommend, or if you do have time to read this long report, obviously, the easiest way to do that is through the management discussion and analysis. Gives you basically an overview of the financial statements that are in there and some of the highlights of what happened during this past fiscal year. I also encourage you, if you have any questions for me, either contact me directly or through Anthony or Mike. I'm always willing to answer questions on a current issue, something that happened in the past. We always like to address, address issues upfront rather than having to deal with them when we can't unravel them. If anybody has any questions at this point.
No, what you did was the previous year? Or did you go back before that?
Pardon?
You did twenty-four, twenty thirteen?
Twelve thirteen, right.
And that was it? That was the only year that you looked at?
That's our first year, yes. It was a predecessor auditor did the.
Right, I know.
Yep.
I was just wondering if you looked back a little bit to see what they did or anything.
Well, we review their work papers. It's a mandatory requirement that we contact them if they have any issues. We review their work papers, review their reports to get a feel of, you know, what was going on with the town.
Was the Board of Ed given the same report?
Yes, it was.
They were?
Yep. Yeah, we, we don't pull any surprises. They were aware of all of the management letter comments prior to, probably prior to them even being written down in, in written form. We don't like to surprise anybody after the fact.
Right.
Those management letter comments aren't meant to punish them. It's really to help them.
I see you mentioned something about strengthening internal controls and operating efficiency. Is that town-wide? Is that Board of Ed? Where's?
Because, where are you looking?
At the letter, second page. It says, "To the Honorable Members of the Town Council Management of the Town of North Branford, Connecticut." Second paragraph, "During the audit, we became aware of certain matters that opportunities for strengthening internal controls and operating efficiencies."
Right. What they're, there's basically three levels of potential weaknesses. Excuse me. A material weakness, which is something that's very blatant and definitely has to, should be corrected. A significant deficiency basically is something that we want to bring to your attention that's potentially could cause problems in internal controls. A separation of duties issue.
So what you're saying is one person is doing too many jobs with the money?
That's potential, those are material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. These are basically just deficiencies that we see to improve internal controls, enhance the internal controls that are already there.
And I also see that there was something about some double-signed checks that weren't double-signed?
It's not, and again, like I said, it's not a policy here that they are double-signed. It's normal practice that they are double-signed.
It's internal control thing with the double signing.
Correct.
Is what you're telling us.
I think normal practice here is that they're double-signed. I think that probably should be and basically it's become policy by the way it's been done.
Now, you went to all the departments in the town also?
Correct. We interviewed all the department heads, basically going through their various job duties, their cash receipt process, their cash disbursement process, purchasing.
What about the rec department?
We did that originally. We have gone in to do a more in-depth analysis of that and I've actually, the draft report for that went out this past, actually today to Mike and to Pam.
Tightened things up?
It's actually not really bad. I think with a small department, you have to be cognizant of the oversight. I think in discussing more in-depth details with Pam, both of us came to the same conclusions about where little nuances and little changes can be made to help the situation.
And you went through the tax department and all that too?
Correct.
Okay. Everything looked great?
I'm not going to say it looks great. Everything's obviously. I don't want to say, you know, it's perfect because we're not here twenty-four seven watching everything.
No, it's not perfect.
Nothing's ever perfect.
Right.
Can I ask you, how can you have a grant funds account not know the source of the grant, I mean, the name of the grant?
Well, it's, I think more of it is from the information we were provided from the predecessor auditor and I think there was potentially not as much communication between that auditor and what was going into and with the Board of Ed.
Well, usually with like Board of Ed, if you get grants from the state, you have to, you know, have reports on them. You have to maintain a separate account on it.
Correct.
I don't know if someone could not know where the sources.
We have, I've gotten some older information from the Board of Ed and we are trying to go back to account for that. It is their belief that some of it was items that needed to be reimbursed to the Board of Ed general fund account that weren't. But at this point, it's not totally reconciled at this point. The current grants, I think, are controlled better. I think it's, these might go back ten or fifteen years that I don't, obviously, we don't have all the information yet.
There was no AC report from the Family Resource Center, right?
An AR report?
Yeah.
Again, it's a new system. They weren't familiar with it, but it is something they're working on.
But they're taking a lot of money over there.
Correct.
Right, and they're not tracking it, is what you're telling us?
No, it's being tracked. I think it's more of the reporting that is coming out of the system. Because you can pull up individual reports for each person, each resident that's registered. So you can see those logs. It's more of a reporting issue.
And there's, where's the money go to? What account? Is it going to a special account for that?
Yes, the Family Resource has its own separate checking account for receipts and dispersals.
Pretty much what comes in goes into the account and all that good stuff?
Correct.
Okay. That's important.
Yes.
So on the grants, where does the grants come into the Board of Ed? Do they come through the town first and then go over there? Does, did all grant money come to the?
No, I think they go right directly to the Board of Ed because they have a separate grant checking account. And they're tracked by each individual grant.
You've done other towns?
Correct.
So as the financial board of the town, would it would it be wise of us to ask, and I do know that all the surrounding towns around us have this, but we've never seemed to get it? A report on the grants at, you know, our monthly meeting?
I'm not going to talk about separation, but I mean, I'm sure you could ask for those. I don't legally, I don't know if they're required to give because of the Board of Ed separation. I mean, that's more potentially a legal question.
Public information.
I mean, it's public information. I'm sure you could ask for that and get that.
Either the selectmen of surrounding towns, you can go south and east of us or you can go northwest of us where there is a selectman form of government and they do get monthly reports on the status of grants. So.
I've seen it both ways. I do, we do audits of towns that do get information on it and we have audits of a town that, well, they probably don't even request it, so that's probably why they don't get it.
So if we as a board wanted to look further into what's going on with grants, what sort of an audit would we need to do to go forward?
Well, I think the financial audit is sufficient on, you know, you can get all the details of what's going in. We do specific audits both on the federal and state Board of Ed grants too. Those are included in, not only the financial audit, but the compliance audits. So we look at those. We haven't looked at prior to twelve thirteen and that's where a lot of this has this grant fund money that's kind of unknown what its original source was and if it was used is prior to twelve thirteen. The audit that we did, we can track every receipt that came in from the state and every disbursement and what it was used for.
So you're saying before twelve thirteen that we don't know what happened?
Well, I didn't audit it. I don't know.
Right.
And with grants coming from the state is, how are grants administered within a Board of Ed? And is, like, is, do they have somebody who's paid out of the grant to administer the grant or how does it work?
No, most of the admin is done by the central office staff. Most of the grants that are coming into the Board of Ed are for special education. So it's usually the special education coordinator that's monitoring both the budget for that grant, where that money is going to be expended. Most of it's for salaries for specially-aided teachers and that's all laid out in the authorized budget that the state approves.
And on the grants that you looked at then for this year, everything was correct?
Correct.
So your recommendation of looking into, under the Board of Education grant, your recommendation of looking into the unidentified funds, where do we go with that?
Like I said, I've been provided with some old information, spreadsheets. I'm not charging to go back and look at that. I'm just basically doing it as a service to the Board of Ed and to the town. If it becomes a two or three-week project, then we'll obviously, or if I think it does, we'll talk about potentially a separate fee. But I think just reviewing the ins and outs as far back as they have the details for that can be found, I'm going to just, you know, go ahead and do that.
What kind of dollar amount are you looking at in those grants? The unidentified amounts?
I want to say it's about twenty-five thousand, but I'm not sure. I'd have to double-check and I can get you that number.
Okay.
Now, when you say the Board of Ed maintains several funds for which a complete general ledger is not maintained, why wasn't it maintained and who's in charge of maintaining it? Sure.
It was a switch-over in the system from eleven twelve to twelve thirteen. The systems that they were using, I believe it was for the cafeteria fund, the grant fund and the Family Resource. So it was basically, they were more focused on making sure that the receipt and disbursement side, the profit and loss statements were functioning properly as opposed to getting the whole complete general ledger set up with the cash accounts and any receivables or accounts payable systems. So I think it was just more of a time issue and when it was set up and getting it through and getting it finished by the year, by year-end, which it wasn't done. And knowing that system, getting a little bit more training on the reports that it produces and how to get that established.
So on the grant funds, I just want to make it clear that this board then wants to hear back from you.
Yes.
Whether it be that you need to come to us to fund, you're looking into it further or whether you're okay with that?
Yes.
You guys all agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
So you figure it's like two to three work weeks?
Well, I don't, I don't know. I've just received, well, I shouldn't say, a few weeks ago I received some schedules. It's a matter of now with tax season, finding the time to just stop doing tax returns and then find some time to do that.
So I would say, Michael, you should carry this on the agenda and if we have information, we look at it and if we don't have it, but at least that way it won't get forgotten.
Now, what are you talking about as far as segregation of duties here with the BOE?
Basically, there's one person that does a lot of the information, the processing.
So you're saying a check and balance situation?
Yeah, I think it's more so, probably a lot of it could be alleviated if that person doesn't get the bank reconc, get the bank statements and also reconcile the bank statements.
You shouldn't have, yeah, one person controlling everything.
So even if you just remove that one step out of that person's responsibilities.
Now, that's up to the BOE to do, right?
Correct. And I've talked to them about that.
Right, we have nothing to do with that, obviously.
Correct.
Now, what about the cafeteria deposits not reconciling with the cash registers?
No, they do, they potentially reconcile. We just wanted another person to be doing that outside of the cafeteria. And that's also already been corrected.
Okay. Because if your deposits don't reconcile with your receipts, we have a problem. So as long as the BOE implements this stuff and you look into this grant stuff, what do you think about our system of accounting and operations and checks and balances in our town?
I think it's pretty good. I think you have a lot of cross-training. I think you have a lot of checks and balances. Obviously, with small departments, you do as much as you can, even if there's just one or two people in that office. But I think everybody's very cognizant of those issues. So they do implement their own internal in the departments, checks and balances.
The tax collector states, during our audit, we noted that there are no printed final posted rate books for the grand list years two thousand and seven through two thousand and eleven, although required by state statute. Then you gave the recommendation. Is that something that has to be done to get caught up or?
Well, most towns do it. I've never, in my personal experience, I have never run across a town that doesn't have one. I've also never heard of any penalties or anything coming down from the state if you don't have one. So I think it's more of an internal decision at this point. Basically, it is your permanent record of what transpired in that fiscal year regarding payments, corrections and refunds for that grand list year.
Michael, do you know how big this, what that rate book would look like? I mean, how?
Those are the items we put in the budget for the last several years. The council knocked out at a later time.
Cut it a bunch because it was too much.
Because it was too much money and no one looks at them. So what Ken has done since the report came out, he's been on the last several weekends and he's printed them off the copy machine for each of the grand list years. So we're up to date now.
Yeah, I thought I remembered.
It's like eight thousand pages for each grand list year, the most recent grand list year. So do it during the day, pass it to the copy machine and it causes aggravation. It's coming on the weekends and caught us up. So we did have it in the budget here the last several years.
Is it something that, what helps you, like if there's an issue?
No one ever looks at them.
So it's not even something you need to go back to?
Very real. Very real.
It's one of those state mandates that unfunded.
They do a lot of unfunding.
Did you look into our suspense list also?
We don't review it specifically, but we do look at what's approved every year to go in there. We don't.
So you didn't go in there and like tear things up a little bit?
Not usually.
Right, okay.
We do trend it, you know, if there's one year that, you know.
Well, you didn't look to see if like somebody was on it for the last ten years and then whatever and?
We don't trend it down that specific.
Right, I didn't think so. Okay. That's something I've, it's been a stick in my craw if you want to say that for a while with the suspense list. I was just wondering how far you got into it.
Yeah, I mean, we don't go to specific accounts and say that this one is, this one is correct.
Looking at everything.
Yeah, no, we'd have to.
Yeah, that's okay. I will say though, you've done a much more thorough job than a previous audit. And I really liked your style and the way you report things and you're a lot better than the previous company we had. I will say that.
And like I said, you know, none of those management letter comments were surprises to either town staff or Board of Ed staff. As soon as we come up with something, we report right to them. They don't need to be surprised.
Right, that's fine.
And my offer still stands. If you have any questions after the fact, please do not hesitate.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item D, report from Chris Barde, assessor on the grand list, two thousand and thirteen.
Christine, like I said, not here tonight, so she texts me and passes it out.
I was driving around today, listening to my scanner, listening to public works.
The phone number of the carrier.
Yep, key mobile.
This is just a list that Christine prepared, just kind of an overview. In your agenda packet was the actual grand list information.
In your agenda packet was the actual grand list information, and it did go down about a quarter of a percent. And this is her explanation as to why. Some of the highlights, some of the court cases that were settled, the squeaky clean car wash, the Tuckett Woods Realty apartment complex, the Evergreen Woods Shoreline Life Care, and the Sam's Convenience Store being the larger of the real estate settlements. Two others that she referenced were settled, but no final numbers are in place yet for Dunkin' Donuts property, uh, Foxen Road, and a residential piece on Clear Lake Road.
Actually, the latter one has been settled in, uh, during the executive session. We'll discuss it. It's really, uh, on the agenda for executive session for approval of the council of the settlement.
Do you have any further questions on the grand list?
Well, just to be, just to be clear with the public, you know, the grand list went down.
Right.
Mm-hmm. So we've gotta cut spending so we don't have to raise taxes. To get back to zero.
Item, uh...
I just, going back, one question. To offset the decrease to the grand list, it says over five hundred building permits were processed, adding value to real property. What is, I'm not sure what that means.
I guess, I think what she's trying to say there is that, uh, the normal part of taking a building permit is that once the work is completed, signed off a CO, then it gets, the assessor goes out and...
Thinks it'll be an increase due to that?
Right. Well, she added, the five hundred building permits were processed so that if you did an addition on your house, let's say, the CO guy that issued went to her, she went, went to your house, measured it, added it on. So there was an increase.
Okay, but, but we don't know, we don't know.
A dollar, no, no.
Yeah. Is that something we're gonna know with this grand list, or is that gonna be going forward, you think? I mean, I know you don't know.
Well, she, she signed it, so it's, so...
It's incorporated in.
With whatever she's incorporated in, we're down a quarter of a percent.
Correct.
So I think what she's trying to say is if we didn't have those five hundred building permits, the grand list would've been worse.
Exactly. I think that's what she's trying to say.
Yeah.
That, that's what I'm, that's what...
Yeah, so it's already in there.
Right.
And so the net effect...
She signed this, correct?
Correct. That's correct.
So it's not changing for this year, or?
This is, this, this number is the number.
The only, the only change that'll happen probably between your budget or the manager's budget and your budget will be the Board of Assessment Appeals. They may make changes, and that'll be the final number that'll go through the final budget process.
Yep.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you. This is what it is, right?
Yeah. Item E, "Review of Successor Agreement Between the Board of Education and the North Branford Federation of Teachers." Uh, before we get started, um, we had the presentation at our last meeting, and I know, uh, some questions had arisen. And I did ask the town manager to forward the questions to the superintendent. The questions, um, were sent over. I believe, um, let's see. Also, several phone calls were made as well. But anyway, the first email was sent February fifth. And some of the questions were, "What is the overall increase of the new three-year teacher contract by year using current insurance costs and premium shares? What was the counteroffer by the Board of Education on the wage proposal? How does the increase in premium share, twenty percent, twenty-one percent, twenty-two percent, relate to the percentage administrators pay for Anthem coverage? Administrator's contract has a ten percent premium share for the HSA contract and paying Anthem coverage. Administrator contract has a ten percent premium share for the HSA contract and paying difference between the Anthem and HSA, which is, um, health savings policy. But there is no way to figure out the true percentage administrations pay. What percentage premium share do non-union administrators pay?" And several were named, which, you know, I won't bother naming. "And what Anthem insurance plan are they covered under? Is there any advantage of the new pay scale that was smoothed? And what was the driving force to implement this? Please feel free, uh, to contact us with, you know, any of the answers or..." And I believe, Michael, you called and also left a message. And I had asked you to send at least two emails. None of these questions were responded or answered.
Right, I haven't, no, I, you're, you're correct, I haven't heard anything yet.
What's the, what's our deadline to act on this? The thirty days, what, what's the...
February twenty-seventh.
Okay.
So...
Nine days.
You know, I, I was hoping to have, um, some of the, you know, these questions answered. It helps make a decision that I think is very important, uh, to the town, especially looking at our grand list.
And we don't know what the costs are of this contract.
I mean, John, are these, um, privileged, privileged information as far as what each year would cost?
Oh, no, it's not, it's not privileged. It's a, it's a calculation, uh, that has to be done. It's, it's public information, but under the Freedom of Information Act, a public agency such as the Board of Ed, they don't have to calculate. They don't have to, if you wanna know something like that, if they have a document that has that information, they have to give it to you. But they don't have to go through calculations, even though they're using public information to, to answer a question. That's as if they were talking to somebody from the public. However, the Town Council is something else, I would think, being the funding authority for the Board of Ed, and being poised to enter into, you know, the budgetary sessions that you're going to be having. Uh, it's a relevant question. Uh, I don't know what the circumstances were, uh, for the superintendent not, not respond, not being able to or unwilling to respond, but, um...
Well, I mean, I, I'm confused in the guidance. I was asked by the council to be the representative for the town. I attended all the meetings. This evening, I brought my notes. I was, you know, called and told that I couldn't discuss this. And then I've been told that I could discuss this. So where, where do I sit as far as, um...
I can't imagine you not being able to discuss it.
Sharing this...
Particularly when you have to make a momentous decision as to whether or not to approve the contract. And I think it's, it's a, it's a discussion that would be had in public session. I think the insurance questions that you've asked could easily, well, I, I'm not saying easily, but it, it's something that their insurance consultant should be able to answer for you. And they, and they should know very well, uh, what this, what the increase in the health insurance is because the health insurance component is the second largest monetary item in any collective bargaining agreement, second only to salary. And typically, employers or Boards of Education or, or municipal employers, when they, uh, look at the wage proposals and what they're able to offer, they most certainly would take into consideration how much money they're saving on the employee group increasing its premium contribution or going to, uh, another health insurance plan with a different design, such as the high deductible HSA, which we were talking about. That's supposed to be cheaper. And so that's probably the reason why they were rewarded with a lower premium contribution, whoever had, may, may take that as a way of shepherding them from the, from what may be the present health insurance plan to...
No, they actually wanted to know, the only time they asked me anything was if the town had an HSA.
Both the town has a high deductible HSA plan?
Right.
Well, we should know that answer.
Yeah, we know.
Well, who's our insurance consultant? I mean, and, and, I mean, for instance, when you say the town, you're, you're talking about the non-unionized town members?
Uh-huh.
Well, that's another issue. Cause obviously, you've negotiated contracts with the police commission, uh, secretaries, public works, custodians, uh, that would all be apparent in, in the contracts. And it's not unusual for the, for the, for the Board of Ed and the town to have the same insurance product in order to, uh, get the best buy on them. And even though unions and private and, and non-unionized municipal employees might contribute at different rates, it's all okay. But I would think that, um, uh, an important source would be to contact the town's insurance consultant and/or the board's insurance consultant if they're different.
Well, even besides the insurance, I mean, my concern, I'm being asked to vote on a, a wage increase, year one, the two-point-seven-eight with a step movement. How much does that equilibrate to the town in dollars?
Well, it, it...
That, that can't be figured out?
Oh, no. You, you, a person who's on step, it, it, the, let's say the settlement was nine percent, I think it was. Okay, for three years. About, I don't know how, I think I asked this question, and I was a little surprised. I, usually, half the group is on max and half are on step.
You said a quarter were on max.
Yeah, a quarter were on max.
Because they had a lot of freezes.
Right.
And no step movements.
Right, so those, those people who are on step, they're gonna earn more than three percent.
Right.
Okay, and those people who are on max are gonna earn less than three percent. Okay? So if, um, uh, in order to pay for the people who are moving on step. But the total increase to the teacher's salary account is the number you wanna look at. And they've increased the teacher's salary account, um, for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen year by a certain percent. I don't know if it's three percent.
Two-point-seven-eight.
Well, that's actually fourteen, fifteen, because that contract doesn't go into effect, so...
Correct, correct.
So it's the next budget year.
Fourteen, fifteen salary account is going to be increased by two-point-seven-eight percent over the thirteen, fourteen.
You too.
However, it's parceled out, whether you're on step or you're on max or whatever, so...
All right, so to interrupt that, if, if we just took two-point-seven percent times the...
Teacher salaries in the budget.
Times the teacher's salary that was in last year's budget, would that get, that should give us the year's increase?
Roughly.
Well, but their certified account includes administrators and whatever else, and they're not, that's not part of that.
The thing is, they're not giving us any solid numbers.
Right, they're not giving it to us, but before we can vote on it, unless they want us to just vote it down, we need to have those numbers. We gotta know how much money we, we already have to raise, and if you look at it, our debt service is going up two hundred thousand. Our grand list dropped, and Anthony would know a lot better than me, but in my math, I think that comes out to about ninety to a hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue. Looks like it drops about three million, Anthony, is that about right?
Ah, yeah.
Yeah, I think...
Disagree with me.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, you're right.
Um, so, but I may have done that wrong, cause, you know, mills are confusing. But I figured it, it dropped about three million, and if we're at thirty mills, take them up about ninety thousand in tax. So, so we're already three hundred thousand in the hole before we start this year to maintain zero, to maintain no increases.
Well, the, the real issue here, the real issue here, despite, you know, n- none of these settlements, my guess, ever go down easy with the finance board or the legislative body. No one likes to pay more money for essentially the same lobster roll. However, the real issue here is, if you reject this contract, are you, do you think you're gonna do better in arbitration? Which has, as, as I indicated last time, a cost in and of itself. So, you know, there isn't a...
So again, we need to know what the cost is for the year to know. So, to know whether we wanna go to arbitration or not.
Yeah.
So let's say the cost was fifty thousand to go to arbitration. If we have the chance of winning one year and we're gonna save two hundred thousand, I'll take that bet.
And set the precedent for all the other contracts that are coming up.
It's time to take a stand, folks.
So Mike, so I've got a question for, for, for John. Oh, are you, can I interrupt for a second?
Yeah. I, I just feel as though, um, this process was kinda backwards.
They wanna put a gun to your head.
So first of all, I wanna, I, I wanna know if, if they started out right, and, and I'm not sure, maybe it was...
Well, yeah, but you're going where I was gonna go, so go ahead.
Yeah, maybe it was Michael's fault, but I wa, I still wanna know if, if this whole negotiation was legal. Because on a letter dated from the superintendent of school, September sixteenth, and he sends it over and he says, you know, basically, he sent it to Michael Paulus, and he says, "As you are aware, the Board of Education must meet and confer with the Board of Finance of the town regarding these negotiations within thirty days prior to their statutory commencement date. To comply with this statutory provision, I'm suggesting the Board of Education and the Board of Finance meet on Friday, September twentieth, two thousand thirteen, at ten AM." So there's a couple of problems here. The superintendent knows that we're the Board of Finance. We don't meet at ten AM in the morning. And, you know, he's the one that makes the big bucks, and he would come meet with us at night at one of our meetings or an executive session. So that's the first problem I have with this. The second problem I have is this, the Board of Ed never met with this financial board or an appointed member that this financial board appointed to meet with them. So how is any of this legal?
Well, first of all, uh, the ten AM was their suggestion. I mean, they're, they're not, you can't say that, uh, that you understood or you would've understood that because he's suggesting ten AM while it's unreasonable or inconvenient.
We never saw that.
Well, that's a different issue.
That's right, that's...
That's a different issue, but...
Time's not the issue.
So, I mean, that's...
So you answered the easy part.
Yeah, I answered the easy part. You would've said, "Yeah, we'll meet with you, but it's ten, it's, it's seven o'clock at night." And, you know, all right, so, but you never, you never had that opportunity, you said. He doesn't, you know, the obligation is for the board to meet with the financial body before the commencement of negotiations so that the funding authority and the Board of Education can, uh, get a common sense of where things are gonna be going. So you don't, at this point, with the contract being filed, have thirty days to say to yourselves, "You agreed to what?" I mean, you should know...
That's what we're saying.
Yeah. And, and let me be honest with you also, because, uh, over the past forty years of doing this stuff, a lot of times, uh, Boards of Finance don't actively avail themselves of their proper role in this process. They know about it, they don't, you know, a member of the...
But by state statute...
Yeah.
They have to be notified.
Yeah, they, they have to be notified, and, and I would say that it was, you know, he could've sent the notice directly to the Town Council. He could've sent, but he could've just as easily sent it to the town manager. That's also a logical choice. And, uh, for some reason, it didn't, uh, it, it, it didn't happen. And it's not his... And it's not his, it's not the superintendent's responsibility to keep after the town council for, you know, "Why aren't you here? Why aren't you meeting with us?" All they gotta do is send the notice and they're done. And that's all they have to do under the statute. So, and again, this is, first, and to put this meeting in context, this is a, this is a meeting that does not have an awful lot of legal binding significance to it. You can't say at this meeting, I don't want, like you said, to the town, to the town hall employees who are not unionized, or to the town manager directing the policy, you can't say to the superintendent of the Board of Ed, "You must spend less than two percent, period." They can say, "Thank you very much for your opinion," and they can go about their business. Now, that may mean that come six months later, we're sitting here, or you're sitting here, and you say, "I told you, we didn't want you to spend more than two, more than two percent. You didn't listen, so now we're gonna reject the contract." But you don't have, you're not in a, you're not in an equal bargaining position at this meeting.
Right.
They need to know where their, or they should want to know where their authority-
And in this letter, they had a bunch of questions that I believe Michael answered for.
Yeah, yeah.
Which, you know, is how they were basing stuff. However, I'd love to know what your answer was on where the grant list was, where we didn't know it went down until now. But, all right, so, so, all right, so we didn't get the letter, I wasn't on the council then. So the council didn't get the letter. But, so, and I can tell you that I was in several of the meetings in all the years that I've been on the council, where we went in and it was an executive session, and we met with the board chair, the vice chair, the superintendent, and the town council. And we told them basically where we wanted to be. So my question now is, and Anthony doesn't know if he can tell us, and actually, and I've talked extensively to him about this, I don't wanna speak for him, but he doesn't know of any other offer. So my question to you is, if we're not getting information from the, I personally can't support a nine percent raise in three years, when the grant list went down, the, our debt service is going up, and the private sector has been stagnant or declined on their income in the last decade, and still steadily every year. So, so I'm not gonna support this, and I'm gonna call for a vote on it at some point. However, if, if I wanted to send this to arbitration, where do I get the one year, or the two years, or the three years that I wanna send to arbitration? Or that we wanna agree to and send to arbitration? Where do we get that number from?
What, what do you mean? Oh, you, can you dictate to the Board of Ed what that number is? Not at this point, not at this point, oddly enough.
Hence the meeting.
Yeah, no, you can't, you can't tell the Board of Ed, "I don't like three percent, I want two percent."
We can't do that at this point.
No, you can reject the contract, and that will have a very simple, single effect. It will plummet the whole contract into binding arbitration. Okay, you're rejecting an agreement, okay? If it goes to binding arbitration, and you don't like the arbitration award, you will be in the same situation, but you will have more power because you're gonna be paying for what's called the second arbitration panel. The financial body pays one hundred percent, not the teachers' union, not the board. You will be able to, you will be able to challenge any one or more issues that went against the town. And by doing so, the other side will also be able, on your dime, to challenge issues that they didn't win, perhaps. We don't even know what the issues are gonna be.
But what if there's no issues? What if the, if they've agreed to this? If the Board of Ed and the superintendent, who were supposed to be negotiating for the town side, if they have totally agreed with everything, what, what would you send to arbitration? That's what, that's what we're trying, we're trying to find out, the total cost per year, and what would we send to arbitration?
Well, in order to, in order to go to arbitration, there has to be an issue. An arbitration panel does not sit as a courtesy.
So in other words, then, if there's no issue between the Board of Ed and the teachers' union, we could reject it, but there's nothing to send to arbitration?
No, there is. There's a, by you rejecting it, you put in issue every single controverted matter that went through negotiations.
See, if you read this Connecticut school law-
You're reading a stipulation.
Right, but if you read that, it says, "When we, if we rejected it, you know, then we'd meet, the superintendent's supposed to meet with us, and we tell him our gripes, and then he's supposed to go meet with the union, and all that."
Yeah, contract can still be settled after arbitration starts, and even before it commences. That would be the ideal thing here to, you know, if you're, if you're intent upon rejecting the contract, the idea is to find out, well, how can we make this work? How can, what's, you know, and that will involve the school board listening to the town council, it'll involve the teachers listening, and trying to, trying to work it out. But by rejecting this agreement, essentially, every issue that was raised in negotiations-
It opens everything up again.
Is open.
Right.
And I don't, and you can't control, the council can't tell the Board of Ed what issues they have to agree to or can't agree to. Except that they can't agree, they have to, they're not gonna be able to throw the same contract on the table and still have an issue. There's gotta be a dispute. Now, you know, what can happen is, a Board of Education, and this would be right in your face, would be to have an issue on some innocuous provision in the contract, like personal things. Everything else, they send right back to the, to arbitration. And then it comes back to your lap and you reject it again, and it's, it's just a mess.
Right, but then they're, they're basically costing the taxpayers money by not trying to save the taxpayers money.
Well, you know, in part, you're right, Vinny, but in another part, it's not, it's not all about us. It's what the marketplace is. And what an arbitrator, the neutral arbitrator, is going to make a judgment not based entirely, anyway, on what we want, even though the reasons why we don't want-
No, they're not, John, but nine percent in three years is crazy, just for, just for a raise in salary. You're going to the private sector and people are getting one percent, if that, maybe, maybe one and a half.
Okay, but Vinny, I don't think you were at the last meeting. We went over the settlements throughout the state, and nine percent was not out of line. I think it was like eight point eight seven was the average teacher settlement. So we have to deal with that. Private sector is, is important, it's a factor. But this is a public sector settlement.
But the question is, where did we start before we got to the nine percent? I mean, and where was the other town that got a nine percent raise? Were they a lot lower than we were? I mean, that, that's what, we don't know.
That's moved.
You know?
Well, it is, it is, you're right, it is moved, because you have an agreement now. But I would say that the, based on the ground rules of the negotiations, and maybe this is where Anthony has the conflict, negotiations were confidential. So, there is a, actually, they're confidential to the extent that they agreed not to open it up to the public. I don't know if they had that provision in the ground rules or not. But it's really beside the point. What you're dealing with here is a, is a signed, sealed, and delivered agreement that's on your lap now to accept or reject. And the question is, if, how, if, if the average for the state is within thirteen hundredths or whatever of what they settled for, as far as an arbitration panel's gonna go, they're gonna look at this, and they, I'm not saying they're not gonna reduce it. They may, they may reduce it, they may very well reduce it, I don't know. But it's, but I wouldn't want you to, I wouldn't want you to think that you have some compelling duty to reject this contract because nine percent is high. It is high against certain landscapes, but I'm trying to point out that-
Questions were never answered, we don't have a total increase dollar-wise.
That's a different issue, that's, but I'm, I'm just trying to, the main issue that you're concerned about, frankly, is the wage increase.
What's it gonna cost our town, and our taxpayers, and real bowlers? That's what we wanted to know.
Well.
We're not getting that answer. And, you know, it was asked, it was emailed, everything was done, and it's like they ignored it. So, you know, I'm kinda at the end of my rope. It's like, they're just pushing this thing on us and they want us to approve it. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm not approving, okay? I'm without, I'm ready to stand and make a stand here. It's about time we made a stand and stopped running away like little girls. Yeah, whoops. It's time to stand up, and that's it, as far as I'm concerned. Cut off a quiet.
Well, that's your, that's your absolute right, that, Vinny. I'm just, I'm just a resource.
But again, John, where, so where does the, run that by me again, how do, how do we come up with the town side and the union side going to the arbitrators? They would go create that now, so we reject it. Then the Board of Ed, the negotiator, and the union would come up with two sides? Or it doesn't have to be something that was already in there?
The contract is between the Board of Ed and the union. The arbitration is between the Board of Ed and the union, with one exception. The town, in an arbitration area, does get the right, either as part of the Board of Education's presentation, or independent of the Board of Ed's presentation, to put on your financial evidence, the things that you're talking about here, how you can't afford it because your, the grant list went down. You have other, and in fact, that's part of the statute. If you have other expenses, other stresses to the town's budget, like you're putting on a new roof on the high school, you've got, you know, you had an extraordinary year in terms of something else.
Hundred houses in foreclosure.
Okay, that's all relevant to what's called your ability to pay. And you get the right, through your own witnesses, to make that presentation to the arbitration panel. Okay, that's the one exception. Otherwise, it, the game is the Board of Ed and the, and the union. So.
Now, if it goes to arbitration, is it last best offers on the table, or they can just come up with whatever they want?
Well, uh-
You know, like, can they change their wage proposal? That was, that they didn't present? And let's say they come up with a new wage proposal that was never put on the table. Can they do that in arbitration?
Well, they would be, actually, it's not a new wage proposal, it would be deemed a modification of their wage proposal. So in this case, in light of the fact that the town, in one scenario, could wind up rejecting this contract, obviously, the Board of Ed, if it's listening to the town council, would go lower than the wage settlement that was reached. Because they don't want it to go back to the town council and have the town council reject the arbitration award. I think an arbitration panel will understand that. Normally, if you left off in negotiations at three percent, and then you go, and that's on the record, let's say, and then you go to arbitration and you offer two and a half percent, that could be construed as bad faith bargaining. You're going down. You should be, to try and come to an agreement, go up. And they should come down, okay? But in this case, where you have a rejection by the town, I don't think it is bad faith bargaining. I think it's the only thing that can be done in an effort to try and come to either a settlement, which could still happen, or win the arbitration. Now, it's possible that the board could go to arbitration and stick with those precise percentages, just precise percentages. And in the old days, many years ago, and particularly in the non-certified groups, other than teachers and administrators, it would be very common for the board, or the union, let's say, to just slap the contract on the table. Because what could be, what could be better evidence than the admission of the parties themselves that this was a reasonable settlement? They agreed to it, they agreed to it. But it's very, very risky, and arbitration panels today do not follow any type of unwritten rule like that, where it's basically a rubber stamp. So the chances are, if the Board of Ed wants to win as much as it can, that it will have to reduce its position, and the teachers' union will have to reduce its position. If the teachers' union stays exactly where it is, and the town has already rejected it, that's a factor that the Board of Ed, that the arbitration panel's gonna know about. And that would, that would be an arbitration panel just sticking it right in your face. So, it's, look, it's a very, it's a messy situation, and but I will say, the issues that you're talking about are all very pertinent to the inquiry. The main factor that an arbitration panel must consider by law is the ability to pay, which can be modified by the financial stresses that a community has, combined with what's called the public interest. What's best for the public? Not just what's best for North Branford, but what is the public thing to do? What's the best public thing to do? You know, so if somebody argues that the public interest requires that that first award be sustained, because to not sustain it is going to hurt education, you know, which frankly, I don't think you can make that, you know, argument specifically. You know, it's, you know, everybody's, everybody's, it's, it's all, you're gonna go from certitude to total chaos. And somebody's gonna, there're gonna be a lot of broken hearts. Somebody's gonna do, somebody's gonna win two years of salary, and someone's gonna win one year's salary. I can assure you that no party is gonna win all three years of salary. So, you know, that's all I can tell you. I mean, I'm already engaging in conjecture here, but.
Piece of the pie is better than none.
Well, that's why, that's why you're sitting over there and I'm not. Those are the judgments that you have to make.
Correct.
And there may be other, you know, there may be other motivations for you to, for your actions that you feel are in the public interest, and that's why, you know, you've been elected to make those judgments. But it's, you know, it's not an easy thing to do. I don't envy anybody for that reason.
It's a good thing we get paid a lot for this.
I should hope so.
I had my say.
I don't see, I mean, if we do nothing, it goes through. And I just don't see how we can vote on it when we don't know the impact of the yearly budget.
There's no dollar amount, there's nothing to go by. There's all little percentage numbers and this and that, but there's no real dollar amounts for us to look at and say, "This is what's really gonna impact our taxpayers."
John, isn't the only way you'd know that is, you know, who, how many people are each step? You'd have to know the number.
Right, which the board knows. I mean, they had to figure that in order to get the percent of increase, and when what it's gonna cost them, they had to know, they know who's, how many are each step.
I agree, I agree with you. The board absolutely knows the absolute dollar growth of each year. Now, not everybody moves, if I recall correctly. Not everybody moves a step who's on step every year.
There was only one year that there was no step movement.
Okay, so that's, that's whatever they do now. But you can't just take a percentage, because sometimes they only give the, sometimes they only give the money to the maximum group, and they don't give it to any of the internal steps because they figure people are moving a step, that's enough. I don't know what they did, it's called a distribution.
Right.
But they know, they know, that's the one thing that they could tell you over the phone, exactly.
I mean, those were questions that we asked on February fifth, and today is February eighteenth, and we have not received any answers from them. We don't meet again before the thirty days is up.
I understand that, but isn't-
But that means if we, if we tabled it tonight, we would have to have a special meeting to come back to vote on it.
We voted on it tonight.
If, if they answered the question. There's no guarantee, I mean, they've had thirteen days to answer the questions, and they haven't answered the questions.
They've ignored them.
Well, you know, here's the, the, well, then I say we vote on it.
We vote on it.
I mean, we, we're gonna have to either vote whether we're gonna accept the contract as is or reject it as is, and I guess if we reject it, then it goes to arbitration.
Let me ask you this question, and I, you're absolutely entitled to know this, the cost for each year. But how are you going to know whether, I, I would just, let's say, let's say it turns out that the cost is eight hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars for the first year? What's the right cost, eight hundred and seventy-nine, eight hundred and thirty-two, five hundred? I mean, there isn't any, there isn't any goal line here, that's the-
Well, then, the thing is, by that, by that logic, we just let everything spiral out of control.
Right, well, it's just rubber stamp everything, then.
How do we know we have the ability to pay? The, the thing here is, it's just like any other, it's just like any other-
We probably don't, I mean, either way.
It's just like any other- It's just like any other court-type case. You go to court, you settle. Why do you settle? Because you're, because you believe that you run the risk of doing worse in court. And the thermometer that they use, or the barometer that an arbitration panel use, is by and large the marketplace of teacher and school administrator settlements in the state for that year, and for the out-years. And that is ju, you know, people argue that, you know, if you happen to settle at the beginning of the season, you basically wind up dictating how everybody else winds up, or if you wind up at the end, you know, you're, you're gonna be disadvantaged, 'cause someone else settled early and whatever. Um, so I don't know what you're gonna do with those numbers. I don't know how you're going to know that eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand is too high and eight hundred and thirty-two thousand is just right, other than it's less than eight hundred and seventy-nine. It's just, what's that?
Your Tarzan, grow a set. Let's go.
Up. Jesus.
Yeah, I'm done.
I guess, and, and we don't know, you know...
But then, Al, why would they meet?
In the letter, they had sixteen questions.
Why would they meet in the beginning?
That they answered, and, and I'm, I'm pretty sure that in September, we didn't know that the grand list was going down.
And neither did they.
And neither did that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if we did reject it and send it back to them and said, hey, we've got information tonight that the grand list went down. We got information tonight, next on the agenda, that our debt service is going up two hundred thousand. So, I mean, do we try that and say, you know what, we've gotta do, we're gonna do a little better? But I'm still confused on where the offer, we reject it. It's totally up to the negotiators from the, so the superintendent and the lawyer for the superintendent.
No, but we're gonna say.
We don't get a say until it comes back to us, right?
Well, you get to reject it. You get to reject the arbitration award. Right now, you're rejecting an agreement, and the process has been frozen. Once the parties make an agreement, okay, the process is frozen, meaning that the arbitration timetable is told. Now, if the council rejects that agreement, that's reactivated, and they're immediately plunged into the arbitration. Now, they go to arbitration, and whatever the decision is of the arbitration panel, the award, uh, that gets filed again with the town clerk's office and the town council. The town council has the right to reject the arbitration award entirely, and now it is pretty much all a town thing. The town can decide which issues that the arbitration panel decided were wrongly decided and appeal it, but as I said, the other side can also take the opportunity, for free, to also raise issues that they have, that they did not prevail on. Now, I have to tell you, this going to a second arbitration panel is rare, very rare. It's, it's basically referred to as a second look panel, and it's not another hearing, it's not the same arbitration panel, and all the evidence from the, from the arbitration hearing, all the briefs of the parties, and all the big notebooks and all this business, it gets thrown in a cardboard box, and they drive it up to Hartford, and three, and the, and the commissioner appoints three neutral neutrals. Okay? On this panel, there's an arbitrator appointed by the Board of Ed, who's favorite, who's biased to the Board of Ed. There's an arbitrator appointed by the union, who's biased to the union, and then there's a neutral. In the second arbitration panel, there are three neutrals. There's no hearing, there's no witnesses, there's no additional evidence that can be presented, except the statement that the town prepares as to why they think certain issues were wrongly decided.
So we do get, we get to provide a statement that goes up there with us?
Only on the, only in the case of a rejected arbitration award.
Or a rejected arbitration.
A rejected arbitration.
So this first time, I'm sorry, guys, I'm trying to get this figured out. This first time, though, the Board of Ed already agreed with this.
Yes, they did.
So if we send it back to them, they can do absolutely nothing?
They could. They could. They could. And the history of negotiations is also a criteria, so they're gonna say, look, we worked very hard on this, we, you know, we dropped some other, you know, we dropped some of our, the, the union will say, we dropped some very important issues that other unions like us have, and the board's gonna say that, um, you know, we got some things as a result of this, and in the health insurance area, let's say, all of that will now be unraveled and potentially be an issue. They, they can't have issues that were not issues in the first place. Other words, when the parties made their proposals, you know, the first time, and even, even, well, whatever the issues were in negotiations prior to mediation, that's where they pick up from. But it's, um, so...
You're done?
Well, I'm done answering Mr. Rose's question, Vincent. I hope I'm done.
Right.
Yeah, you're done.
Are you opening up the whole contract, not just the salary, right? You're opening up the whole thing?
Opening up the parts of the contract that were put in controversy in this negotiation.
Whatever there was on the table prior to mediation, so if they didn't...
So it could be insurance?
Yes.
Right, if, if they didn't have anything about, let's say, coaches' stipends on the table at all, they can't put that on the table now, 'cause it was never on the table, if I'm understanding, John, correctly.
But typically, the stipends are governed to some degree by the wage increases, but you're right.
Or sick days.
That's a good example.
You know, sick days. If they didn't have anything regarding sick days on the table initially, they can't say, okay, we're gonna cut their sick days and go from X to Y, because they never introduced it.
What does it cost to go to arbitration? And, and we pay all of that?
Uh, no, they pay. The Board of Ed is gonna have to pay their attorney. Ultimately, they'll come to you during budget time and say they overspent their budget because they had an arbitration. The attorney, uh...
Because we sent them there.
Yeah, well, in this case, definitely, yeah. You know, a lot of times, you don't send them. They go on their own, because they're unhappy with the result, um, with the actions of the, of the union. Um, the, the arbitration panel in a, in a truly contested arbitration award, where there are a lot of issues, uh, I just got a bill from the, from the neutral for my share, twenty thousand dollars. That's the, uh, no, I'm sorry, it's ten thousand. The total fee for the neutral was twenty thousand, uh, and my guy, my arbitrator was about eight thousand. So the neutral gets twenty thousand, paid half and half by the parties, and then the other, and then the parties pay their own arbitrators.
So it's roughly eighteen thousand dollars.
Roughly eighteen thousand, um...
So the teachers' union has to pay as well?
Teachers' union has to pay as well, and now you've just paid for the arbitration panel. You haven't paid for your attorney, and the attorney, you know, the attorney could, depending on how many issues there are and how much, how intense it is, it could be, you know, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. It's just hard to, it's just hard to know. Um, so...
Over, over three years, even if you save a half percent a year, you're gonna make up more than that.
Well, you're, you're not gonna win all three years. That's the only thing I can tell you.
No, no, you're not.
But, but you might make out better by winning one year than the, and them winning two years, let's say.
You know, it's time to take a stand here. We just can't rubber stamp everything anymore. We have no information on total dollar amount, and they're just putting a gun to our heads, saying, sign it, or we go to arbitration.
Well, may I make a recommendation?
Sure.
And then you can, and you can yell at me.
I won't yell at you. Maybe I will.
I would say, 'cause I think you, uh, you, you may have mentioned it as, as an aside, or erosed it. Uh, I would do, I would do nothing tonight, and I'm sure the Board of Ed has gotten earful tonight from everything that we've talked about. And I think that it would be very surprising to me that the board, if the Board of Ed did not seek you out to try and answer those questions and to try and, uh, address your concerns. And it may be that after they do all of that, you're still sitting here saying, it's too much money, it's too much money, but I think there is the possibility, rather than, you know, putting everybody...
Well, last, last week, you just recommended that we approve it, because it wasn't worth it.
You do realize that we have businesses and lives, too.
No, I understand that, but you could have, you could actually have a phone meeting, too. But, no, I say...
And if they haven't been cooperating in two weeks since we asked these questions...
I understand that.
Right.
But the problem here is that their cost is your cost.
That's fine and dandy.
When they go in there...
They still have to bring us their budget for us to approve.
They, they, they do. They do.
Yes, okay. That's, that, thank you. I know that.
So what I said was there, that's a night...
I, I don't know why, why they won't answer the questions. You know, it, maybe it's two hundred thousand dollars a year, and we all say, you know what, that's not bad. You know, then answer the freaking question. You know, I mean, I, 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 you know, it's like we've got an arrogant superintendent and a rogue Board of Ed. You know, it's crazy, but... If we do nothing, we just hit the, we see where we're at and hit the bottom line.
Well, if we go to arbitration, we can still hit the bottom line.
Well, you know, Vinnie is also right. Uh, you can, you... I gotta, I gotta rehabilitate myself a little bit here. Now, the point I'm making is that you, you do have, you, you do have, can do the same thing from a negative side. You can reject the contract, which will immediately, I would assume, also cause the board and their attorney to try and meet with you and see, how can we patch this up? 'Cause you can withdraw the arbitration, you know, once it's been, just, you know, or you can actually have a stipulated arbitration, in which case, if you're okay with that, that would basically take your right to reject it out of play. But either way, whether you do nothing for the next eight or nine days and wait for, and wait for a call so they can be nice to you and tell you everything that you should know, or you say, I've had it, and we're gonna reject it, and, you know, we'll, if you wanna discuss this with us now after the fact, um, that's something else, but, uh...
I have a question. We have eleven days, right, before this contract?
No, we got nine days, I think.
Or whatever it is.
The twenty-seventh, nine days.
We've got nine days.
If we vote on it tonight, we, you would still have time, if you wanted to, if they counteroffer the teachers, to, to change the vote.
Yeah, I wanna vote on it tonight. I, you know, I have a business to run, that I have to work at night and do things.
You know me, I'm working there.
I know, and, you know, we've been banging our heads here for how many hours, because we have not the information that we asked for two weeks ago, and we didn't get it. Let's just vote on it. Wherever it falls, it falls, and we, we deal with it. It's time.
We also should listen to John's recommendation, though.
Oh, we've been listening to John's recommendation all night.
But you know what? I just wanna clear up to the, clear up to the public. Not only did we ask for the information, you know, we, we sent it over in writing. Then, I know for a fact that Anthony had Michael call, the superintendent, and he got no response. And then I had Michael call. I'm like, God, you know, we have to vote on this. These guys are gonna wanna answer these questions, and I, I made Michael call again, and we got no response. And I'll tell you what, if I'm sitting on the Board of Ed, I'm gonna be talking to the guy that's working for me, you know, because that's wrong. You know, we're, we're volunteers, we're the financial board of the town, and we have a right to these questions, we have a right to have them answered, and it's, it's ridiculous. I mean, you know, everyone talks about the Board of Ed and the council have to get along. Well, they're going a long way at us getting along by not answering questions that are gonna, are public knowledge. They're gonna have to have the answers to put into their budget, so they know how much money they need this year, and, you know, it's just ridiculous. But, you know, we put it over in writing, and Michael made at least two or three phone calls requesting that we have it for tonight. So it's, you know, I'm frustrated with it.
I make a motion, we vote on the contract?
Let's see.
Well, if you're gonna make that motion, make the motion as to what you wanna do, reject or accept?
Reject.
Let me ask you this. Let me tell you.
Well, it could be either way. It doesn't matter.
I think you better, I think you better, I think you better, Ben, you gendered it to take action, because I, all that's on here is review of success or agreement between Board of Ed and North Branford.
Well, it says discussion and action at the top, under new business, at the top of number nine.
You're right. That's wrong.
So we're okay, right, John?
Make a motion to reject the Board of Ed contract with the teachers.
Uh, think about this for a minute. I'm trying to help you out.
I'm sorry.
Trying to help you out. There's not a lot of people here tonight.
Yeah, who's away on vacation and nice sunny wherever, and...
Listen, if you, if the motion is to reject the contract...
It's their responsibility to be here.
Listen, and you don't get five votes. So the motion to reject fails. What is that? An acceptance?
I guess it's accepted.
That's right.
Okay.
That's why we vote.
Well, you could also make a motion to accept the contract.
John.
And if it fails...
Well, therefore, you're smoking. Stop.
I'm telling you.
Well, no, his point is valid.
I know, it's valid, but obviously, I'm not gonna make a motion to accept the contract.
Okay.
But if it fails, then, then it's rejected. Yeah, but then it's rejected.
That's fine.
So that's...
You could make a motion to it, you could make a motion to accept it and vote no, too.
Right.
Right.
Exactly. So we either vote yes or no, on whatever motion we make.
Exactly.
I, it's not, it's not...
Right, it's how you feel about the contract.
It's not brain surgery.
Right. It, it could still pass if you vote no.
Why do they make things complicated?
You know what? We've got a, we've got a Board of Ed member in the back of the room who'd wanted to say something. Um, I have no problem if she says something, but I'm gonna put it to the mayor and see where he goes with it.
I, I mean, I don't have a problem, but would you have, who would like to speak?
Um, I just wanted to speak as...
Could you state, could you state your name, please?
Sure. Colby O'Rourke. Um, as a board member and as a taxpayer, this was brought up last month, and we all came. Um, so if you had any questions, Don and Scott were there, and I, you know, I'm, I wasn't privy to any of the email communications or phone calls, so I can't speak to that. But as a taxpayer, I wouldn't want the decision and the cost to the town to be because of an email wasn't responded to. I, I...
An email and how many phone calls?
I appreciate your passion for it, and I, and I understand...
How about a little, a little cooperation between the superintendent and the town council?
I get that.
We asked questions thirteen days ago, and we have not received an answer.
And I understand your frustration.
Is he that busy that he can't give us an answer?
I understand your frustration. What I'm saying is, John has said numerous times that it's gonna be a cost to the taxpayers.
Yeah, it's gonna be a bigger cost to the taxpayers to give all this to the teachers, too.
And, and it may still be the same cost plus the arbitration cost.
It depends if the BLE wants to go in there and say, oh, we think this is a great deal.
Let me ask you a question. Do you know how much a year it's gonna cost?
I, I don't. I don't, and I, I...
And you're on the Board of Ed?
And I didn't receive those emails, and if I did, I would have asked.
No, 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 what I'm asking... You don't even know what it costs.
What I'm, what I'm asking is, you're, you're making an assumption that I'm gonna cast a vote on, on not getting an answer from a superintendent. You're wrong.
I'm not. What I...
First of all.
I'm not.
Let me talk.
Okay.
Because I'm tired of being accused of this stuff between the superintendent and all this other... I don't vote that way. I'm voting for the best interests of the taxpayers and for the town. And without having numbers and what we asked for, makes it very difficult to make decisions.
I can appreciate that.
Whether Scott, whether Scott is here tonight, not here tonight, I really don't care. That makes no difference to me whatsoever. As a matter of fact, it's gotten back to me from, I don't know how many different people, of things that he has said about me and the negotiation, which I have never said. I'm sitting here, trying to make a decision, what's best for the town. What did the children, I haven't heard from either side, not even at the Board of Ed, where I sat that night, and Marcy said it to me, the kids got nothing out of this contract. Nothing.
And, and again, that, you sat on the negotiation committee. I'm not on the negotiation committee, so I'm not privy to those conversations. What I'm just saying is, you have nine days. Get the information, and, and if it's that, you don't want the information, then you're voting based on the fact that there wasn't a need for it.
My dear, we asked for it two weeks ago.
And I understand that, but you still have nine days.
How rude and inconsiderate is that?
You know what?
Yeah, but we asked for it in enough time prior to our meeting, so that we had it by tonight.
There's no excuse.
Did we get a second on the motion?
No.
No.
So we didn't get a second yet, but I'm gonna do this, and you guys are gonna die when I say this. I'm gonna, if you do get a second, I'm gonna move to table it, because we now have a Board of Ed member who has come up here, and took a lot of guts to come up in this environment tonight, and we've got another one sitting back there that heard our case, and neither one of them knew of what we were asking for. Now we have two board members that know, and I'm, I'm willing to table it and say they're gonna get us the answer.
I will make sure that you get an answer. I did see the email. I did see the email that you sent to the superintendent.
I'm gonna call a special meeting that I'm, that I'm not gonna be at. Well, I, I know, guys... Well, I, I know, guys...
You may or may not need it, I, I, I don't know, you may be satisfied, I don't know.
Right.
I mean, I will make sure you get an answer within the next day or so. I will, I will give you my word that you will get an answer. I was in on negotiations for this. There was a lot, there was a lot brought up by both sides that fell off the table, okay? It came down to salary and, and benefits. And I don't know the exact dollar amount because we were still waiting. Their premium share went up 1% a year as well. And we were still waiting for the insurance information for a little while to see how much, and we got our, our answer. I know it's 1.6%, okay? But I don't know what that translates to in dollars, okay?
What we're looking for is total.
Right, well, that's why we need the insurance premium as well, because we're, we're charging them more for their insurance, which comes off of their salary basis.
But it's already based in your budget that you presented, so you had to have some idea.
I don't know the breakdown of it, no, I do not know the breakdown of it, I did not specify.
But it, it has to be in your budget for next year, the 14, 15 budget, because you've already presented the budget and you have, based on salaries that you negotiated and the insurance increase, along with what you negotiated, was in, was in your budget. So you had to have the numbers, and that's what we were looking for.
Well, if it's in the budget book, you guys have the budget book as well.
Um, the budget books have not been given to the council.
You have one.
The whole council has not received budget books yet.
Okay, but you do.
Rose.
But it doesn't matter.
Those are the estimates. You put in, we put in a figure for salaries that we...
But they haven't even given us that.
Well, I know.
But you did have the budget book, you were there. I can't tell you the number off the top of my head, because I don't remember it, but you did, if you, if you're saying it's in the budget book, you had the budget book.
Well, you developed, the, the budgets developed for next year, so they had to put some kind of number in there based on the contract that was negotiated.
Yes, but we were also, but to give you the exact dollar amount, we're pretty close to a dollar amount. We were waiting to hear about the insurance premium.
Right.
Which we just got before our last budget workshop.
I'm going to sit down, but my only point was, I, I want you to be able to have all the information before you make the decision.
You know something, how about if we have some cooperation from the superintendent?
You know, Vinnie, that goes both ways. We can stand here and argue all night, but that, that goes both ways.
I'm not arguing, but you know something, if you ask us for something, we give it to you. We wouldn't stall you, we wouldn't ignore your phone call, we wouldn't ignore your emails.
I, I'm just saying, I didn't know about the email, now I know about the email, then it'll be responded.
You guys have come up here, they've said they're going to get us the information, that's good enough for me.
You have to give me an opportunity to make good on what I'm saying, because I don't know about emails that I don't know about.
But it's just, it's ridiculous. You guys got to get the superintendent under control, okay?
I'm going to go sit down now.
Is there anything else you'd like besides the dollar amount? I, I, when I saw the answer, so all this...
There's a whole list of questions that we have.
We can't give you the last best offer, that's still confidential from negotiation. Attorney Jazmondi let you know that last time, that one we can't answer.
Yep. Anthony, you've got a whole list that was sent, the emails got it.
So, answer the, answer the questions that you can.
Yep. Absolutely. I did ask once if that was answered and they said they were, they were getting it together, and I didn't know if it ever went or not. We've had some email issues through the Board of Ed line, so, something with the computer. So I didn't see if there was a response.
What, that they didn't receive the email?
Some board members have not been recei- somehow with the best...
Oh, the board members haven't received them.
Yes, yes, no, I know they received it. I said, I didn't know if a response went to you guys or not. I did ask at one point if the response was sent and they said they were getting it together, and that was the last I had heard. So I will make sure within the next day or so, there's an answer to that. And I apologize for the delay, that's...
But it's, it's another meeting that we have to come out for, to do this, because we didn't have the...
Because he didn't feel like answering it.
Because we didn't have the answers to our questions and, and we gave them plenty of notice, plenty of time.
Right.
That, that's the issue that we have, is that...
He just wants to make my job harder.
We have two meetings a month, you only have one meeting a month.
I don't, I don't think that's the intention. They, they were here, they were both here at the last meeting, so...
Yeah, well, my partner was in Florida and I had to work the last meeting, my dear.
Well, that happens to all of us, I understand that, it's a volunteer job. Mr. Fawning couldn't make it tonight, Mr. Esposito couldn't, I understand that, we all do.
Right.
But I'm saying that they were here, it's not like they're being totally negligent, they were here last, to the last meeting.
Can I, can I ask a question? The nut, the dot, the dollar amount, the number, the, the reason we don't want to vote on it tonight, right now, is because we don't have information, is what the cost is going to be to the budget?
What's the, yeah, what's the difference?
The total cost of that contract increase is going to be. That's what we want to know, more than a lot of other things. But that's what we need to know. I mean, is it half a million dollars? Is it 200,000? Is it a million? We have no idea.
Because the contract's not going to change. I mean, it is, it is what it is, that the Board of Ed has accepted the contract, so...
That's fine, it goes to arbitration.
To me, the decision is whether or not you decide to accept what we have on the table or reject what we have on the table.
Exactly.
So then why are we going to have another meeting based on an irrelevant number?
Because we don't know the number.
We don't know the number.
Well, I think we could kind of do the math in our heads and kind of get an idea on what the number is going to be.
Well, now, you've got benefits, you've got salary, you've got a bunch of things that go in there.
You don't know how, how many people are each step.
We don't know how many people are in steps, we don't know, you know, there's a whole bunch of things that we are not privy to and we don't know. And we're blind right now. And that's, that's what's really aggravating.
Well, we're either going to beat a dead horse or we're going to... I'm going to make a motion to accept the teacher's contract.
Wait a minute, we have, we have a motion?
Nobody's seconding it.
Nobody's seconding it.
What was your motion?
He said he was going to table it.
No, I said I would table, I would table it.
And you made a motion to accept?
I'm making a motion to accept it.
And I will second Al's motion.
To table it? It's non-debatable.
What?
It's non-debatable, motion to table is non-debatable.
Right.
Oh.
Did you just vote?
Oh, okay.
So, roll call.
Well, then it's tabled. We're going to table it, or is that what we're going to do?
We're going to vote on table.
Okay.
Yeah, you want to table it to a certain, a day certain?
We have to be within a...
No, I want to get the information.
Roll, roll call.
There's no guarantee we're getting the information.
Roll call.
Well, just wait, if, if John's point is, if you want to table it to a certain date so that we, then we can meet by that date.
Well, when does this thing end?
The 27th.
So let's table it to the, do, can we vote on it the 27th? What is the 27th?
I'm not coming on a Wednesday or Thursday, I have to work.
So let's do a Monday or Tuesday.
All right. What's there Monday before the, uh...
The 24th.
24th? So we'll table it to the 24th?
Okay.
Second.
Uh, motion by Council Rose, second by Council Angeloni, roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
No.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
No.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
No.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fuci?
No.
Council Rose?
Yes.
So it's tabled to the 24th?
No, it's not.
Motion failed.
Fourth thing from...
So it's not tabled?
Nope.
So now, so now he can do his motion to vote?
Or not.
I'll make a motion to accept the contract.
Second it.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
No.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
No.
Council Angeloni?
No.
Council Caprio?
No.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fuci?
No.
Council Rose?
I'm not sure.
How exactly do I log that in?
I'm so confused now. I'm going to go with, uh, I'll just go with no. So what does that mean?
It means the contract's been rejected and the parties are officially in arbitration.
We didn't vote to send it to arbitration.
We, we voted to reject it.
We just turned it down, it's going to arbitration.
Yeah, once you reject it, there's nothing you've acted on.
But we can, they can, they can still reach an agreement, isn't that what you said?
Well, they could, but I would think that they, that there would still be a purpose in them communicating with you.
China could become a democracy, too, you know?
See if this thing can be, see if this thing can be worked out. Because you can with, you know, the...
We can withdraw, we can have...
Well, no, it's, it's an arbitration, but it can be settled, this is, you know, the first arbitration hearing, although it's going to be expedited.
Well, that's to happen within five days of this...
Well, no, you got to appoint arbitrators and then you appoint the neutral and then you have, it probably wouldn't happen for a couple of weeks. First hearing probably wouldn't happen for a couple of weeks. And then that would be more of a, of an administrative hearing.
I like those two.
To set the date for substantive hearings within the next 25 days. But you, you got your work cut out for you to do it now. If there's going to be any type of resolution, it's going to involve the Board of Ed giving you the information you want and, and the two of you trying to come up with something and/or the union. Because the party that proposes the existing contract is, is really going to lose. Because the arbitration panel knows that it's been rejected.
That's conjecture, though.
Well, I know, but, well, it's conjecture. A lot of my, a lot of my opinions are conjecture.
I know.
He's been at it for a while, though.
I should have been a lawyer instead of a chef.
Jesus, you would have ruled.
No kidding.
All right, so I, I think it's, you know, just to, I understand we're basically through with this issue, but I would, I would hope that the parties would have a plan to go from now to the next three weeks to see what can be done to satisfy the trust that apparently has been broken and to see if that can be translated into some sort of a resolution that you don't have now. But that's clearly what's happened, there's, there has definitely been a, a breaking of the trust. And so anything affect, any, you're not able to effectuate anything and they're not able to effectuate anything, so...
So I just want to say I appreciate the two board members with coming forward and trying. I still want to know those, those answers, though, so... That's the thing, I don't know, I don't know if anyone else, I don't know if it's 200,000 or a million or, you know, I just don't know. So, and that does make a difference to me on how I would look at it. What's next?
Just one thing was mentioned, the budget books are here, so if you don't have those, the Board of Ed goes here.
What's next, I'm going to move.
Report on grants. And I don't think they're talking about the store.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you. Certified salaries, 111.
I think I'm getting...
0.63% of the total budget for this year. Here you go, guys, in the budget book, they got certified salaries increase 0.63% of the total budget.
But certified also includes your administrators. So it's not just teachers. Even though the teachers are qualified, but...
That's, yeah, that's the increase.
That's the increase. Looks like the increase would be about 322,000.
Over three years?
No, the first, the first year.
It also includes administrators.
First year. So we're talking about 700,000, so...
So you might be, uh, choose...
The administrators is here, an additional that.
Okay.
With the administrators. So it looks like this number is here.
So we're looking like close to a million over three years. That's the one-year budget.
It's only for this year. But then there's the, there's the decrease, there's the insurance, it's netted off.
Yeah, this, this would have been really helpful five years ago.
This, this looks like, this looks like the influence to the administrators.
Well, we need to go, move on to, we're on the next item.
Max, I already did, you got the grants or you didn't?
So I don't know whether this...
So grant, reports on grants.
This has to be just the increase.
Who's that, him?
Yeah.
It's not Anthony, you don't want to be bothered with this one.
Maybe the town attorney wants to take this one.
I thought you got the grants.
Man, oh, man. 0.10% of the total...
Don't you get the grants directly?
Yeah, we're getting, uh, we're looking for them.
Just the increase.
All the grants you can...
It's just a report on the grants, it says here, I don't know.
Yeah, we're getting grants, that's...
There you go.
Okay.
All right, Al, you, uh, ready?
Where are we at?
Well, we, we were on...
Reports on grants.
I actually think that we got that answered in the last two segments ago or whatever, or what did you have on it?
Well, no, well, I was asking Anthony for the grants, but he doesn't have them.
Somebody give us the whole thing on this.
Oh.
Well, I, I got the grants, so I just provided them to all you guys. But I, I got a copy here for you if you want one.
There you go.
Helpful, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, evidently I got it in September, but somebody threw it in the trash.
There you go.
Item G, debt service.
Debt service, um, Al, it's actually going down next year. If you looked at your, at 5, 5, 5,571 down to 5,474 next year.
Oh, okay, it went up this year.
It went up this year, this year was the hit. It gave you a little bit of a hit.
Um, what happens a few more years out?
Okay.
Do you know that?
Turn, turn, I sure I know that. Sure I know that, come on now.
The next page.
Turn the page, that's the good news.
Oh.
The good news, we're at 5,5, 5,4, 5, and then you see, we, we've kind of done a decent job of leveling it out.
Right.
If you call back in 2000...
So it goes up in 15, 16?
Right, a little bit.
Yeah, 5,5, 5,4, 5,5.
About 50,000.
Focus on 17, 18 now.
Oh, cool.
Except, we have a bonus.
What happened there?
Well, the debts, the debts are going to go, be retired. The question that you have...
All right, so, so I understand this right, Anthony? So like in 17, 18?
Yep.
To stay at zero, we have almost $2 million extra.
Exactly.
See, that guy's going to have to make it to 17, 18.
Well...
That's, uh, that's good news.
That's very good news, because you, you've been, again, if you look back on history in the 90s and that neighborhood, we put money aside every year for capital projects, we had reserve funds, right? Kurt with the town aid, for the road, he needs about a half a million dollars a year for road projects. We've been giving him $200,000. The roads are getting beat up, fire trucks are getting old, public works trucks are getting old. So the question, what happens in 17, 18? You take that money, say you keep level funding, at the 5.5 number. So as the debt service goes down, you're taking that cash.
And we can build equipment.
And you're buying things cash. You're limiting the bonding cost, the interest cost, the financial advisor, all that stuff. So if you keep level funding at 5.5 million dollars, you have an opportunity to solve some of the woes that we've kinda neglected for years. Again, fire trucks, public works, roads, things like that.
Without increasing tax.
Without increasing tax. On the other side of the coin would be lower taxes, if you wanted to. But then again, you're neglecting the things you've neglected previously.
Right.
Or do you put something else in that mix that you wanna bond for? Now, we, obviously, the.
Yeah, I don't mean to interrupt you, I'm sorry, guys, it's like echoing up here, could you go in the hallway, or, all right, thanks. Go ahead, yeah.
So, so again, if we, Al's 100%, 17, 18 is the magic, right? That's when things start to happen.
That's how you start coming down.
Things start going down. And again, if you leave it at a level funding at the 5.5 million, you leave yourself with, you know, $2 million roughly of money to solve the woes we've neglected. The alternative, you have two, three alternatives, you can either, you know, keep it at 5.5 million, and take that surplus cash and use it for your road program, your public works trucks, fire trucks. Part, the second option would be to lower your debt service and therefore save money, if you wanted to. Or the third option is, obviously, it's been kicked around for 100 years, 49 Capitol Road, what do we do with that? Is it to the point where we do a major overhaul, it's outdated, you know, there's maybe energy efficiencies, the windows are probably not energy efficient, do you need a new building? That's not my decision, but does it need to be updated? Most likely. If that's the time, you factor that in now, so maybe, again, you're keeping your 5.5 million, and maybe some of that savings you split, some you put towards some capital, some you put towards updating our buildings in town.
Cut a half a mil.
Or you could do that as well.
Right, cut a half a mil, let's put a piece of the tie in all different places.
Exactly.
Let's give the people a little break.
Exactly.
Let's do some things that we need to do and spread it out.
Exactly. So there's some opportunities, again, you know, again, if you look at the next few years out, 5.5, 5.4, 5, you know, it keeps it pretty consistent, which is, you know, ideal for budgeting. So if we can focus on 17, 18 as our first year of, and it's only three years on the road, it's not like we're talking, you know, 100 years in the way.
We could do our sewer project.
We could do our sewer, we could do anything you wanna do.
Yeah.
Well, we need to see what our facility study says, too.
Exactly right.
That's the first thing we need to check out and see what our most urgent needs are in this town.
Exactly right. So it'll dovetail nicely, because typically the way we structure our debt service is, if you do it, say, we're gonna miss, we'll probably do it in November of '14, maybe '15, we structure the debt so that it triggers out two years after that, so it'll actually fall into that 17, 18 window, and again, remain as level as we possibly can. So there's ways we can structure it to minimize, you know, the big deviations and the big.
Master is juggling.
Well, we're trying, so.
And the two roof projects that we're gonna do, we don't have to bond for, correct?
With cash.
Because we have the money from the NBIS project.
100% correct.
So we don't have to increase bond for those.
100% correct. Right, and that was, that was due to the legislation that got changed, if you go back to our official statements, back in 2008 we started, we built the school bigger than the state standards had allowed, and we had bonded, assuming we're gonna get X amount of dollars back from the state, well, our legislator, legislator actually got the waiver changed, now we're getting more money back, and therefore we have this surplus bond funds that we already bonded for, we're gonna use it for the two roof projects. So it worked out well for us, again, and again, the goal is always level funding if you can. So the opportunity you're gonna have, the question you're gonna have is 17, 18, what do you do? How much do you divvy back to the tax? How much do you divvy towards cap? How much do you divvy towards a school, you know?
You know, that's gonna be a fun year to be on the council.
No kidding.
Yeah.
Well, you know, one of the things you gotta think about, though, and it came up at the communications, is the notion of the two roofs and capital projects, you're gonna put a million two and a million four, you're essentially saying, you know, you're committing to that structure, right?
Which we, you know, those conversations.
Versus building a new high school.
Right, but we also have urgent needs at the PD, too.
No, no, I'm just saying, the point I'm saying is, is you're going down the road where you're talking capital projects and bonding, where, you know, you're gonna say, here's a million two in the roof now, you're not gonna go five years and say, oh, we need a new high school, you're gonna have to say, we spent a million two in the roof.
Right, we're retrofitting.
Right.
We're retrofitting.
We're remodeling half of it or something.
But you know what, we did have that conversation a while back, and, I mean, my understanding was we weren't gonna change the footprint that much, but that is a conversation that should be had sooner than later.
Right, we put new boiler in there, too.
Well, the facility study, you better tell us that, too, right?
You can do new windows.
Right, you do new windows.
That's what we're spending money on, the facility study.
Lock and running.
Absolutely.
Great. There was one good thing on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, he just hit the doofurn over there.
Right.
Right.
What else you got? What else you got, boys?
Financial report.
Financial report remains unremarkable, again, the top line, we're about 2% ahead of tax collections from the previous year. Revenue appears to be significantly higher, it's the timing of the pilot payment, or the ECS grant, if you look at 50% this year compared to '24. When that first payment comes around February 1st sometime, sometimes it sneaks into January. What I, I wanna just point out to you, that second item down from the top, delinquent tax revenue, you look at it, it looks kinda odd that we have $117,000 negative delinquent taxes, and that's a function of the Evergreen Woods rebate, when we did the settlement for the 11-year, that was delinquent revenues, we had to transfer that money, that's why it shows us kinda odd to have negative delinquent tax collections. But aside from that, everything is running, you know, like I said, all the tax numbers are higher. Bottom line, again, appears to be about 2%, nothing too crazy about that. Public works, again, look at all the wild winter costs, a few percent ahead of last year, we're keeping an eye on that with the tremendous amount of salt, obviously in repairs and overtime that's going through public works. But besides that, it's a pretty clean report. Any comments? Questions?
We got some salt from the governor, right?
I'm not sure, to tell you the truth.
Actually, I talked to Fran, we did get some, and we start a little low, but let's clear that we don't have enough stock.
The governor also said there was more, they took it off the state.
Yeah, there is, but they're even low. A few barges came in, like 300 tons, but.
But another one's coming.
Yeah. Yep. Don't put salt in your food.
I don't use it. I just put it on the ice and.
Since this is the second meeting of the month, and this is like Finance Committee meeting on there, one of the issues, or one of the things that Finance Committee used to get from the Board of Ed is, we used to get, on a quarterly basis, we used to get a statement from their accounts, the balances in their accounts, the family resource center, cafeteria, student activity accounts, all of that stuff, and we have not gotten that for probably at least a year. Could you send an email or a note to them requesting that we get that information?